One, March 1st, January 2. We can see by school board policy meetings, all order. Victoria, please call the board's responsible. Where is it?
Here.
Member Kelly?
Here.
President Maureen?
Here.
Member Perry is absent and Member Vickers is not yet. The board, taking the pledge of allegiance. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why?
This is not on the ground.
Yes.
Or upside, or upside down.
Upside down.
Like we're at war.
Yes. Are there any changes to the?
No changes.
Sorry.
It's my thought disorder.
My.
We'll fix it.
Can I have a motion second? You have a question?
Yes, minutes, no minutes.
Second. Thank you so much. Paul Jager?
I am.
So make sure. Three. And then obvious public comment form closed today at noon, no comments. Tell me if you receive any or should speak. We do a part on that, but I didn't see one out there.
No, no cards received at this time.
Okay. We're going to review and discussion for policies in this thousand series.
Thank you. We're going to kind of go through from the board of items that we're reviewing into three different sections. The binder, I think we have around, so we'll start with the ones that are new or updated. And we have a trunk that are current, which we recommend it. And then we have a set that we were like entire for different reasons. So I think maybe start with just the new, any new and updated ones here, which are this order. First one here, BP 6000. Beginning of each of those sections, which usually what it's more of a summary, not necessarily a specific. Quarments in their headbooks, so this version here, customs and rules, the beginning of 6000 really summarizes. The approach around learning and assessment student learning includes things around what want students to be, how we want to be successful in college career and life. That we have differentiated support, alternative programs, supplemental programs. All the kind of general things that were connected into this entire series, the 6000 series. That includes student achievement, articulating grade levels, assigning instructor, instructors, get a class based on student need. Communicating this to families with goals and actions. All there was about the bottom, so I'll recommend reading this one or adding this new one here as a overview to start this session.
I appreciate you pulling together this is about. I think how a comment seems.
When I just speak up. So I just forgot. Yeah. Sorry. Thanks.
So. The third paragraph starts with in as much. So it talks about with learning at home. And I wonder if it'd be helpful to understand what the ideal with learning at home is. I remember when the kids were little and my parents were doing the work for their projects and things like that. Right? Because my whole like their projects and their kids' projects. And they. And so I didn't know what ideal was, if that means with learning at home is your having a consistent place for the kids. You know, some time that they're doing their homework. I just had like, we did their homework, it depends on the teachers not understanding what they were doing. And I can't go, this is where English education so much, right? But they wouldn't know where they were.
Yeah.
And so that, so the learning how much kind of, what's the ideal around that? And then if there are any things you feel you need to add or put out of there, just to make it all clear.
Well, this is tend to, the way it's written here through CSBA recommendations, it's a tendency to be kind of all back seeing of what, how it looks a little bit different, obviously, on the age of students. You mentioned, you mentioned one around, you know, having an environment for students, you know, at work or supporting them at home. Sometimes that's providing even just, you know, general support for school and the conversations that parents have. It does a lot of times would involve poor as you get to a little grades. And supporting them, those obviously get a little bit more specific based on a grade, but we're talking about, you know, kids that are five, six, and seven, like, and then they're doing something at home, like, hopefully it's not too much, but, you know, it's hard for them to do it on their own. Right? And then we saw like last year during this learning, took out a whole new look, you know, when we had, we were being promptless to have a kid at home. Kids having to do a lot of learning on their own related to be, learn how to learn at a very young age than they've probably ever had before. So it's meant to be really all back seeing. There's more in specific ones, you know, that we could set it out by grade level, but this is meant to kind of include all the range of things that parents approaches that we want parents to take with their kids.
I guess I thought with the pre pandemic, because those parents have a really about this meaningful that they have help.
Right.
Right? And is it me, right, the whole bit like where those lines are?
Right.
And that's a lot in that. And I guess we'll do it for some later. I just.
It seems like you could simplify this by just saying it's more to their children's education. That, that concept of being involved, like both in the program, at school, and at home. It could be even more broad and just like meaningful, meaningful, you know. Meaningfully involved in support of their children's education. Because we do go into depth in the parental involvement policy. And to your point in homework policy.
Right, right. Because the next section of this is what we shall do, has nothing to do with what parents are doing.
Right.
So that, that's, so when you think about concepts and roles, the bulk of this is actually what the district's doing.
Right.
Not what the parents doing in that, because the parent one is in a different area, right?
Yeah.
So then we could shorten it easily and just say. Our achievement period.
Children's educational program. Education program. Yeah.
It is as much a word.
It is.
In as much as it's a word.
In as much as it's not underlined, right?
It's to the extent that.
Yeah, we, we hear you.
We, we educated at a different time.
I would probably just put it simply, not.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a, it is.
It's, it's a little term.
Yeah.
I get that, but I'm saying.
Yeah, the spelling is actually correct. Yeah, exactly. No, that makes, that makes sense.
I learned something new every day.
It's just, you're a learner.
Yeah, after yesterday, learning about computers with first graders, about Bluetooth, I was just blown away.
Good business.
When they teach you.
Get their engagement.
Any other questions to come to the board earlier?
Next. Any other questions?
You did the answers first read.
No, I do think these are important though, right? Because this overarching policy should guide us to the rest of the policies within here. So if there's something important to us as a board, even if it's not called out in detail, there should be a, a concept in this wording here.
Because this really is more than word shapes this piece, and the rest of it will all tend to shape and practice.
And we didn't have. And we will show responsibility. We didn't have this, this is me, right? So this is the one of the few that didn't actually have this in it.
To jump in.
Yeah, we didn't have a 6000, like, you know, 5000, but we created all of those, so we had them in existence. We edited them for every other kind of thousands, 4000, whatever. But this one, for some reason, didn't have that. So it does, I think, as Kelly, remember, possibly points out, sets the stage for the rest of the policies to come.
Who goes to the next one? Academic standards, 6011. This replaces BP 6014, which is actually very similar to the first two paragraphs that are in here. Around standards, around student achievement and standards of adopting, adopting standards that align, that are aligned. State standards, all those, all those different reports that. We do a curriculum, we do a schedule, the sequence of the framework. And then it goes into a couple pieces there around English requirements around the different groups, whether it's English learners, standards, math, science. And then now that we know, we noted a lot, families annually, all the standard, standard, I don't know, as well as. So like, a teacher send out what those are at that course. And so otherwise, it's pretty similar to what was, what we had prior, that just wasn't an actual, either policy change or that one didn't exist previously, or didn't exist anymore, 6014.
Change for discussion. So in paragraph three, district contract standards four, and then we list each of the areas where we want our standards to meet or exceed statewide standards. So ELA, ELD, mathematics, science, health education, history, social science, physical education, visual and performing arts, oral languages, career technical education, preschool education. I wanted to suggest adding environmental principles in there, because we do have state standards for those, or at least model content standards, since we're considering adding 6142. So I wanted to ask the board if they support that. It seems like we're calling out any area where we have state standards or model curriculum.
Now, these ones.
Those in science. Pardon me?
They should fall across the ones that you brought to the file. They actually state integrates them into frameworks. For each, that's updated the last five years. Frameworks. What's that?
Even.
Even to that role that.
Yeah, I think they're still calling it environmental principles versus like a standalone set of standards.
Those are incorporated.
Yes. Yeah, these ones here, those are required a long time by the state, right? These ones we have to align to. And then principally, we had it recently, once, like, five, six years ago. And then they're not separate, they're a separate set of model standards, but the state requires that they be integrated into frameworks as they get updated every several years.
And is that how environmental principles are integrated as well? Into those different areas?
Yeah, so in 2016, they were integrated and revised, history, social science framework and the science framework. So that was required by law, actually, that they were put into those, so. Yeah, they're called the California environmental principles and concepts. State board did vote on them, the concept of the curriculum back in 2010. So it is still a state board adopted, but it's not a standalone curriculum. It's an embedded curriculum.
Which is an important distinction, where I don't want it to be a standalone.
Correct. So that is the piece that, you know, these act as standalones, so I think probably.
Oh, is that why they're there?
Yes, yeah, they're all, those are all very specific standalone curriculums, and so. And this, maybe it's referencing in this.
I love things. Because when I call that model content standards. You know, I think they're interesting because state has a long history of having model content curriculum standards. And the environmental principles language kind of denotes that they're not standalone, the principles that cross different areas, but they were state adopted. And I think that if we're going to look at a policy two or three down, it might be important to at least.
Do we have other things in that category?
That are like principles.
What was your question? Do we have other things in that category for the state?
Some of the, some of the English language development is integrated, is definitely integrated all of them, but it primarily sits with the LA. It does integrate into other, there is reference to different way to every.
I mean, and a set of something that's titled, whatever it is, new principles.
No.
There's nothing else from the state.
Nothing.
That's the whole thing.
Would, would your career technical education be similar, though? Because a lot of those.
Courses. That would be similar to maybe like SEL, like social emotional learning. Could be that they've developed. SEL competencies, so that would be similar that you'd see across, because that's on standalone, that's across, but they're not content standards. So that's the, so at the very beginning of the sentence, it talks about content standards, so that's very specific. So I would, I would say, don't add environmental principles to your tech ed, because they are not content standards. But instead, at the very end of that sentence, add something to the effect of. That. Additional state board adopted. Principles and concepts, including environmental, SEL.
Yeah, okay. Then we can make the list there.
Maybe put a couple more, because I know. Several sentences, because they, these are not contents that are, maybe you can give a careful, they are not specifically content. They, they, they go across those contents.
Right.
That's what's required. But we can maybe fashion some language there that just references.
Additional.
That, that there are additional state board adopted principles, including environmental principles. Social emotional learning principles.
Right.
Call a few of them that kind of like that, that are also part of what, essentially what we do for academic standards.
Right. Okay. You guys want to add anything?
Yeah. The real value, obviously, the real value of putting that, probably put that in the frameworks, is because all publishers have developed their curriculum based on frameworks, not the standards. Based on the frameworks, the standards are integrated into the frameworks, but the frameworks are how you teach. And then you get a, publishers then have to go to the frameworks and say, this needs to be integrated somewhere. They're putting that into a framework to require them to have something in the environmental schools, whatever. And then show how to share the second, second.
Okay. Which is what you want, right? You want it probably more integrated.
Awesome. Yeah. State has a long history of having model curriculum standards, and it's shifted over the last 15 years. I don't think by any stretch of the imagination is it going away or becoming less and more in the state of California. So I feel like it should be somewhere, but I'm happy to go with that, right?
Yeah, I was just looking at the terminology of content standards and all the right.
Yeah, so just a little out of this separate sentence that calls out the other.
Does that look pretty good?
I think it actually, to be candid, I think it's better in a standalone sentence, because otherwise it gets lost in all the.
It draws attention.
Well, just it gets lost in all those things, and I think it is a standalone piece that is, as Kelly was pointing out. No one's going to argue that this is an important piece, and it, it does flow over all sorts, just like SEL does. So calling those out separately really does kind of talk about the fact that it's part of what we do in all of our classes, essentially, that as much as possible, especially at the K-5 level.
My, my questions?
You guys are having a good role, like to see what's.
What else?
That'd be great.
All right. Questions off to the next one? BP 6020, parent involvement. This is going, got previously mostly minor updates on language, coverage, and there are a couple of sections that are new and updated. May want to be the paragraph done, references actions and strategies that include parent, parent guardian engagement and involvement. Especially our students who are being charged, watching. So references that specific piece in there, but we have to outreach to them. And get communication and engagement. And then the last paragraph references non title one schools, non title one schools, and so those encourage. Courage, obviously, the communication of those. I don't know if it's absolutely necessary to have that in there, since all schools are not title one schools, but should that change?
That part was confusing to me. When I read it, why, I was trying to figure out, what's the purpose of this being here?
Because there's different requirements for title one schools, which are not listed on here. So this stuff is not title one.
So these, the requirements for our schools.
What's that?
Basically, the requirements for our schools. Do we need the language that says non title one school, or do we just have that statement? Because this is what advice does, and we revise the policy for some reason. We need it to at a point in the future where we have title one school.
In school, they're actually kind of on dogs.
Right, right. So just.
But that's different than this.
My, my, when I, to be wrong about my understanding, but this is not for ones that are designated, designated how that, because we do a real school program.
Yes.
It's different than.
There is a code section, 11502, that talks about all schools having goals for parent involvement, and this not tracks that.
So if a non title one schools is, this could be, we're moving that out.
It's clear to put it in there to me. But. Sounds specifically where you're addressing.
I agree with you.
I appreciate that legal reference there. So it just aligns with. Yeah, especially why it aligns with that.
It would be nice, we'd become top of the school.
I know it would.
Categoricals.
The population has changed.
Yeah.
Better to have the amount one each.
Other author questions on this one?
No, thank you for, for definitely listening, but not picking these up, like aligning all the safety organizational, as well as the language and literature and stuff, relationships, and all the. Content.
Is it clear to fellow board members that the, the research based on the effect of parent involvement on academic success of students, is that clear in the policies? I'd love anybody that picks this up to really be able to realize, you know, the research out there shows that really high levels of parent involvement has a really positive effect on student achievement. And I know it says in this first paragraph, parents and guardians are their children's first and most influential teachers, and sustained involvement in their education of their children greatly contributes to student achievement. Does that language seem strong and clear?
Yes.
Because I think that's one, the one place in our policies where it should stand out.
Yeah.
Yeah. That we support it, right? We report, we support it.
That's the first.
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you. And also appreciated the reference to all grade levels. So just as a note, that that doesn't have to maybe stop at fifth grade.
Looks a little different, it doesn't stop.
It doesn't stop.
Yeah, it ends up looking, looks different.
Do I have any questions? If you move on to the next one, BP 6142.5, environmental education. This is news, one that aligns to a little bit earlier, with environmental principles and concepts. Our, it's that same paragraph, something to point out, reference to talk across curriculum, it's aligned. It's aligned with state about the standards of curriculum frameworks, that's updated, they align those. Or by, but you know, we have a different program based on trees, and that was high school, as a, you know, really starting to get going on their flow. Projects and, and program that really does a, a larger school wide, but they're obviously particularly this in many different ways as well, beyond just a, a larger school wide, but.
Yeah, I think, number of interest, you, you pointed out the question on the actual environmental principles. So in paragraph two, that language kind of references what the state has put out. If you look at the, there's five, the state has five environmental principles, and those are kind of paraphrased in that paragraph. So they match California's environmental principles that have been around for many years, over a decade, but.
Remember that. That suggestion for conversation, little conversation, for discussions. In that first paragraph, it mentions climate change, and there has been all kinds of partisan conversations. 2014, 2015, about coming up with a more active order that becomes nonpartisan. So climate emergency, climate crisis, and climate breakdown, for those three words that have more action, and are all others partisan. And tends to rally people into action and wanting to work on it. And there's changes, legislation that are for climate change, and it never fails to with either climate crisis, emergency, or climate breakdown. And that we then, make sure when I can talk about climate, we keep the language that we're using here. I was kind of holding this word and not seeing it in any race partisan, that, that is a reality, so. And I, the words that you mentioned, to me, would tend to be much more like. So there, there are links and.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
Eight years of, of, I'm sure it says it's not, but that is very partisan, or. Yeah, companies, well, the warming climate change should then be utilized in a very dangerous way to cause division. And the words of all those studies came out, this climate crisis, climate change, and climate breakdown, that means more, that, that is bipartisan, just both pretty. Because they haven't gone over the yes. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but these, all this legislation has thrown through, because of like Louisiana, and other places, and why don't we, stuff is all around, there's even more action words and not passive words. And I know that our town might not speak as much to it, as far as. You know, a ten dollar, better, you know, very, very, you know, type of competition for your.
I, I do, I do another, another word, I can't disagree, though, I think, I know Victor's point, like, I would maybe choose climate crisis, because I've seen that move more into the mainstream, but it is a little more inflammatory, but if it is, you know.
There's some.
Capable of creating more action, then I, I'd support you on that.
Well, that was a huge difference, like it created action, and then there's the laws, legislation at local levels to create change. Environment, in Louisiana, the war needed to go to solve, right, which is a museum, football field of land every day, right, where everybody knew about, so that's. I just want to bring, we're not the same guys, though.
And climate change and climate crisis may be just limited to those two words.
I agree.
Yeah. There's a crisis here, okay? I'm gonna take it as more with crisis than means action.
I have another suggestion.
Yes.
In the second paragraph, the district's environmental education program should be taught across all districts' curriculum.
Instead of May.
Instead of May, and, and not listing the others at all.
Shall, I feel like we use shall, when we shouldn't, or classes.
Because we shall, shall, but.
We do.
Shall. I may as well.
It's stronger, and it's basically the same across all the curriculum.
The district's environmental education, the shall, we taught, those now, I like shall very much.
The only thing about those, that does, that may communicate something with that. It's only being taught across all curriculum, but you could teach as a standard, right? Couldn't have standalone curriculum around environmental education, maybe environmental science, those, of course, you know. That could be standard and stuff, too. And so it's not necessarily across curriculum, it's just.
So a question, Laura, then, instead of May, highly encouraged? No, it's not. Shall and May are part of the little.
Yeah, I mean, shall, like you described, is mandatory, may is permissive. Show, you said.
So like, highly encouraged?
Highly encouraged, it's kind of in between.
What, what seems like should, where does that fit?
That's kind of in between show and males.
Because if we, if we're not doing it, if all these areas are, we're planning to, but we're not doing it, and they say it shall, then we're not, right? The rules.
Right.
Right. Part of this getting there, so.
In legal law, between you, show and majors are clear, they're clear, I mean, if you want to use should, you know, that's like the courage also, it's more to the A, but less to the show.
I think at this day and age, it should be.
I would say, I would say, probably putting it in the policy, if that's what you want.
I would say should, because if, if you were choosing between should and shall, I would say should just on that. If you look at the second part of it, it's referencing to extend possible math, right? Like, it is integrated to that frameworks, which are, you know, will be adopted soon, but, but that's a big shift, right? It's not going to happen overnight, so true, so.
Sure, the goal of one day is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And that board.
I have another suggestion, and this is on, this kind of talks about the principles, which cover the kind of vicar's con, concepts, across curricular nature of what should be taught. And I, and then it talks, we talk a little bit about active student participation and onsite conservation, right? Cycling, outgusting, water reduction. We talk about service learning partnerships, we talked, you mentioned flow as a whole school wide event. We talk about communication or collaboration with other LEAs, other community-based organizations. We talk about equity, the only thing I felt like we didn't talk about, we talked about PD. The only thing I didn't feel like we talked about enough was how it can occur in a variety of. in a variety of different experiences. So let me give you an example of some that I thought of. You know, programs, uh, that can be taught in experiences through experiences that take place inside the classroom, that take place on the school grounds, that take place in outdoor classrooms, that take place in outdoor science programs, that take place in museums, aquariums, farms, that take place in natural settings, such as our marine and coastal habitat. So some mention of the place that these learning experiences could take place, because it's really vast um, in this area, I thought could make its way into this topic.
Within the classroom and natural setting.
My only idea is that would be that everything we do is lies that same concept, essentially environmental. I mean, history, social science.
Right, arts. Could be museums, could be.
Everything, I mean, we do English, we we take kids to museum tolerance.
Right.
That's, it's not even the social science way, it's the English department, you know, so it's purpose.
Yeah.
So I I think when you start calling out all of those things in one policy, you're gonna, we're gonna.
That would go to the.
All of us. I think it's almost a given that what we do, maybe that goes back to, instead of it being so specific in in sixty one forty two, five, is you go back to the district shall in six thousand, ensure that we provide, uh, learning opportunities that extend beyond just like inside the classroom, but include museums and.
And you have to put your foot in it beyond classroom, right? Allow whatever that is to our teacher, definitely.
Including when I live in the two, two, upper classrooms.
Right.
Because upper classrooms are, we have people that go outside all the time for photo class. So you ever get there inside classroom?
Right, it's hard.
Right, so I think it's called out here, you're gonna, we're not gonna go through it and call it out everywhere else, but if you just put in six thousand as the district shall, and then the target that.
So you have that nine or whatever, whatever on the list. Okay, does that work? Because I think covers it on all of it.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, this one's really on how we're building environmental literacy, right? Which is through, some people think environmental literacy is only built in outdoor settings, right? In natural settings, maybe going to Crystal Cove or going on a hike in the Blue Canyon. That's not the case. Well, you know, that environmental literacy needs to take place outdoors, it's a natural habitat. So, um, I don't disagree. It could, it could stand alone in another piece and be applicable to other areas. But we, this is, was a specific comment on how just recognizing that this take place in the classroom, out of the classroom, for all settings, informed settings, or very natural settings uh, as well. But I'd be happy to look at other divisions in six thousand even.
Yeah, you know, we put this up.
So like.
Something around writing. The writing.
So, I'll have to, I'll have to call it out here. Just, uh, there's too much.
You know, especially, especially something around provide, you know, learning experiences and activities.
Because we do have, um, community-based organization. That control a lot.
But he put that sentence on the.
In the six thousands?
The six thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's where I just made a made a notation to make sure that was up.
That's fine, yeah. And I can send you what I was thinking, and you guys can, you know, and see if that meets up the board's approval. So, all right, thank you.
Maybe I'll just call three.
This one is, uh, BP six one four five extracurricular activities. Uh, this is, this is new, uh, so, you know, I've been reviewing these, uh, this is one that we've looked at and aligning, aligns with what we're already doing. And we do extracurricular activities, um, are a huge part of our schools. So we felt those good, fit to add this one in, uh, it's not necessarily required. They've already practicing a lot of this already, but it encompasses a lot of the stuff that kids already have an opportunity to do. And but also references, you know, um, the the importance of kids, you know, with the conduct and bearing this as well, that's maintaining, um, a good academic standing. And anticipate these extracurriculars, so it's prioritizing what they do in the class first, uh, which is very important. And then, uh, you know, as well as all the references there to just different activities are around after school, almost.
Do we have a large number of students that they'll need them in on GPA? Do we have, in terms of being able to have the privilege to attend extracurriculars? Do we have a percentage of students that are facing that as disciplinary consequence?
It's pretty rare, it's pretty rare. I mean, yeah, you'll have demerits, you have to, yeah, so there'll be, there will be times, just like not meeting GPA and or they have too many Fs. You can meet GPA requirement, but still have too many Fs to participate by CAF standards.
Yeah.
So if you're passing a certain amount of classes, just not have GPA. So, yeah, I mean, you'll have students at times that don't. But that's in in the demerit side of things, that's the whole point of the demerit system, is that if you want to go to that, you need to clear that. So it's, uh, that gives students opportunity to figure out ways, or wish to do that, just in ways to to get that done, so. Yeah, I mean, CAF has very specific language. We we think it's important because, um, you know, we are looking to extend our extracurriculars down into middle school, right? With development of sports programs. So this includes six to twelve. So if a student wanted to participate in some kind of activity coed, say, we decide we're going to do, uh, after school basketball team that's going to compete, they will need, they would need to have this as well, so we can ensure that that the student is doing what they need to do in the classroom, uh, in order to to, uh, participate, so. Intentionally, I guess.
Yeah, that sounds very, very easy for students to do, if there's something coming up.
Yes.
Problem or something, I mean, just they go all the way to make it available, just like they go out there, they need for students to give their volunteer hours down. But so they don't end up that. I think the story here, they took eight hours, I mean, it can really work out to try to get that done. My only question was, the whole policy refers to extracurricular and co-curricular, but the title only addresses extracurriculars.
Oh, uh, you did say co-curricular. I had a, I actually removed it, because it's all that you refer to, language that we use regularly. But then I, I did have to read one of the paragraphs, so.
I just have a different, I just have a co-curricular to the definition.
I heard that argued should be used in different ways and this side and that side of.
Yeah, I I mean.
Can you explain to us what the difference is?
Yes.
Yes.
So you can think of like extracurricular would be soccer, right? Co-curricular could be forensics club. Right, there's a class, it's a type of forensics, model UN co-curricular. So you could potentially be in the class for model, that's a perfect example, thanks, Jen. You could be in the class for MUN, but you can't go on a field trip to MUN because you don't have any GPA. So it wouldn't not let you take any, and it's a class we offer. But we could tell you, as part of that curricular, which is co-curricular, as part of the MUN class that you'd be attending, this, uh, MUN conference, you can't go because you haven't met the required, the requirements for the GPA. So that's co-curricular.
Co-curricular, something occurring during the instructional day.
Well.
So portion.
It's clearly attached to it.
Okay. That's what the definition.
Oh, no, we're. Yeah, I, my initial thoughts was like, I've got, I was like, we don't ever use that term. So, really, no.
We don't, but I, I mean, pass arguments, it's a totally lie.
Truly do.
Because we're just adding a fact just to. My only idea was because it's involved in the paragraph.
Yes.
So that was my.
I have two questions about semantics. At the end of the first paragraph, we just stop at co-curricular activities period without putting that compromising the integrity and purpose of the educational program? And then the next paragraph, could we get rid of the first sentence? And just go, no extracurricular, co-curricular programs or activities shall be provided or conducted separately on the basis of the actual segment?
Well, at first, I mean, that's the point, that they're there for the education, and extracurricular is extra. And it doesn't mean they automatically get to do it even though our stuff goes beyond. Help kids get there to be able to do it, not, of course, you can't. That's what that's there for.
It just seems to me that stopping without, I mean, it it seems like it diminishes without compromising the integrity and purposes of the educational program.
As if they might.
Yes.
Okay, oh, as if they might do it.
Okay, fine, no, it's not. I didn't hear it plain until, thank you.
I do need a lot of help.
Okay, no, so what? So, I'm like, okay, I didn't hear it plain until, thank you, Jen, okay? And then what was it like, when I'm sorry?
First sentence in the second, I'm not sure, I'm so.
What if, what was the change? You want to take the first sentence out?
First sentence talks of extracurriculars and connecting this at schools, which I would say that they definitely do.
No, you're talking about the first sentence in the second paragraph.
Oh, okay, thank you. Actually, it's about the activities themselves.
The first sentence, though, when you read it, it's a little more clearer than you think it is. But it's referencing that we really shouldn't have, I mean, prerequisites to the programs.
So why don't we say that?
You almost said that, because I was like, there's equity issue when I read it.
Yeah.
Wait, Jim read it, I read first time. I don't know what you're saying, but when I read it, I mean, you're isolated the way it was, I'm like, it does sound like you should put the blocks in, but I guess.
Yeah.
More of an equity statement, a better equity statement out there.
On a more sort of positive lens, but, I mean, that's what I was trying to say, is that, like, we really want to limit any kind of prerequisites so that kids have access to these programs, and unless it's absolutely essential, right? You know, some high skill thing that we don't want, you know, kids just jumping into the old shop after school that have no experience, so.
The first graders, the, you know, even users.
Well, do we do any things, Jen, at the high school where there will be even more for juniors and seniors, but not for special sophomores? So that might be.
Yeah.
Call under that category.
Yeah, it's a major base. Yeah, so I talked to that one, I think.
It's not more about varsity and.
And that's not an equity thing, that's just a, there's some things that they might not be ready for, or.
But I mean, when they're all there together, there's, there's a hierarchy as you grow, and it's built in.
In what, Gerald?
In MUN, there's a hierarchy that's built in.
Nobody's, but if the person comes in.
I never should have jumped ahead.
I think it should be the board's whole process not to have to make prerequisites, because we want to encourage participation. So wherever feasible, we want to do what the sentence says, which is limit prerequisites.
Right, right.
So have clubs that students can have easy on and off routes to. It might not be every club or activity, um.
But.
Let's say.
Then that's, yes, then you gotta dive into the sentence to, I mean, even I feel like we're, we're agreed that that's a, that's a goal of ours is not to limit for instance.
To limit, to limit prerequisites. So students can participate best they can, limit them. Which are going out, they use that, or they use all those limitations.
There's a, there's a co-curricular, I mean, you're, some of them are locked in, like, you can't change. CAF will not let the board.
Right.
What the requirements are, you have no authority over that.
Right.
Yes, that's not authority. So honestly, there's.
There's none.
No. So we don't create limitations beyond this, with the exception of potentially behavior, that would be a limitation. So what I wouldn't want to have in there is if the board says we want to, like, make it so.
Everybody.
Everybody can do where they want to go, and then we sell somebody, you can't go, because you've done X and Y, and they said, well, it doesn't say that on here, so everyone should have a chance, so I just think.
Well, what if we just, what if we just take up an eligibility, those are two separate concepts?
Was his participation in, so I can see that as two separate concepts, but maybe not, but.
But what if we just, what Jim's just in the, in just taking the sentence out?
The first sentence, uh, prerequisites for participation, shall be limited to those that have been demonstrated to be essential to us. It's not a deal.
Because we're not doing it, we're not, we're not limiting people outside of whatever regulation that are there, right? We're not creating some special rules.
We don't have special rules for participation.
Yeah, so what if we just. Remove it as just in the first place. What would it look like to do that?
Because the the important part of that that paragraph is the rest of it.
Right, yeah.
It's a Jim term coming out there. It's all about the fact that we won't want to prohibit somebody based off of their actual perceived characteristic, their protected class.
Right.
You can't come because, wait, no, that's, that's Jim's point, the first sentence, it doesn't matter, it's the rest of it.
It takes away from the rest of it.
Rest of it is what.
Yeah. So done. Thank you.
Sorry, Jim, I'm sorry, I'm saying it's not concrete.
No, it was, it went around like that.
Nice, nice, uh, gesture.
Yeah.
So.
I get you from that.
Um, the next one is BP six one four five point five. Student organizations and equal access. It is similar, also, uh, BP five zero three four, federal equal access. Um, this is really about access to, for clubs, arranged to go ways. And that's, um, you know, general staff or, you know, with those different purposes, like staff state control. You know, but they can certainly can sponsor and be supervisor for clubs, but this really is about having the classes, something to do with policies, connects to what we're saying.
I mean, what's, I am reading regarding the religious meetings, what is that?
At my understanding, that's just, if there's, if there was a religious, a campus near, or, or, as a staff member, like, you would want to, you must stay neutral, um, that that's, so whether you're not necessary, I think it's sort of, so you're not, a staff member is not necessarily encouraging, pushing, perceived as encourages to to join a religion or move that system in some way. Or, uh, not just for capacity. So, Ron, for example, if I was the, uh, Christian club advisor, and the students were praying in class, I wouldn't be leading the prayer as a teacher.
This tracks.
You could attend.
I could attend, because I have to attend, because someone has to supervise the kids.
Right.
But I am not the lead of that group of prayer. I can sit there, and if they're praying, but I cannot lead it, that it's student-led, and then it's, so there's like prayer in the flagpole. Staff could go out and monitor, but they cannot be the one to lead it, that it's a religious.
This policy tracks the federal equal access act, pretty similar to the language of the equal access act. And the idea behind it is that the government should be neutral in religious matters. That includes public schools. So if you have a teacher who's leading the prayer, as superintendent mentioned, then that would tip the scale in favor of religion, uh, you know, uh, and the idea is it was supposed to be neutral. So if the kids lead it, and the kids, uh, initiate it, then the the equal access act of this policy, say, that's fine. But we should, the school should be pushing kids one direction, either pro-religion or anti-religion. The, uh, public school should be neutral.
Okay, thank you.
But even into that, it takes it further, they're just, they're just, it covers everything. They're the sponsor, I mean, they're not, they're not participating, leading, promoting, they're just a history. So back to you, just sort of emphasize it, call that that one. Just quickly. We have much stuff with that.
The last sentence in the first paragraph. Students' group shall be authorized by principal. I was wondering if we could have some type of reviewed by student government, as far as students have some type of role in recommendations to the principal, or. We don't seem to empower our students or what. It doesn't mean it's a principle.
No, we have fifty clubs on here. So, they, they do go through ASV, because the club has to, in order to be, um, um, nor for club to exist on campus, associate student body actually has to, recognize it as a club, so that happens in the.
So it should, we put that some place in here, so.
It's in the, it's in the having, right?
It's in the having, then having to take a great lot of clubs, right?
Yeah. Club advisor, you got, and then, or the ASV would be the one, which, because it is an associate student body, they get to determine that the club. Needs criteria to exist.
This way I read this, it was, the authority was all of the principals.
He has ultimate authority, right?
So, you know, I I did understand that, uh, the students have some type of role.
For sure, yeah. They make new clubs every year.
Do we need to, just say the, the ASV just fits?
No. Just, it's in the regulations.
I'm reading it as regulations.
Yeah. You just need to go, sign up, item two, then, also back to the concept on a, a, a teacher supervising a meeting of a student organization. Item two says, the assignment of a teacher and other school employee to a meeting for custodial purposes shall not constitute. Item two says the assignment of a teacher and another school employee to a meeting for custodial purposes shall not constitute sponsorship of the meeting. I was reading that as custodial, meaning somebody unlocks the door and re-locks the door and
Yeah.
Custodial up here is actually supervision.
Supervision presence.
In a lot. Custody, similar to.
Okay, not custodial, meaning a maintenance over one or two.
But custodial, we do run into this problem in that we do have at times adults in our community who want to establish clubs on campus. This is very clear. That student clubs are student driven, that an adult from our community in order to establish a club needs to get students to do it, not, they have no authority for which to do it. And so that is something at times we have to try to articulate to folks who want, you know, we really should have this club on campus. Why don't we have this club? Well, students are the ones that drive the clubs. You can't dictate. Just like a teacher couldn't say, we need this club and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to be the person who sponsors it and I'm, you know, that's not how it works.
But we still assign a staff person to supervise or advise it.
Because at lunchtime around school, so yeah, there has to be someone.
And they find the advisor, right?
They go, find advisors. We have some people, I mean, people advise a lot of different classes. So that's multiple, so.
So can we change the word custodial to advisory or?
No, advisement would be, would, in my opinion, would give it this idea of somehow they're advising the students. So what to do? Custodial is simply, the definition of that is.
Custody.
Is custody.
It means to, you can charge a safeguard, uh, person and their property is accounted.
Yeah, it's more of a supervision, supervision. The next one is high school graduation requirements. Uh, there's some up, there's a, there's a, uh, the bottom, but there's a little updated language. Here, the first paragraph, that the CSB recommendation. Really the bigger, bigger changes that there's already pretty short, the requirements are graduation requirements, but if you go to exemptions. A bad, which is a little further down, uh, on the second page, the exceptions. Um, around foster youth, former juvenile court students, homeless students, uh, child of military family migrant students, uh, depending on their progress, right? The ability of their situation, so they can go to the reduced, uh, state graduation requirements. Uh, depending on for their, and that progress, if they don't, time to have. That was, because I was really got it in the, that we were practicing. It's been around for several years, but we wanted to add it to the graduation policy. And the last paragraph has a reference to community service as part of the graduation.
Can you just tell me why this education is ninth and tenth grades? Meaning required from ninth and tenth grades for this education?
It's required in those grade levels because the physical fitness test is in the ninth grade. So PE also, obviously sports is part of it, but when you look at the state requirements for PE, in order to actually no longer have to take PE, you have to meet the criteria for physical fitness exam. And if you fail the exam, you are expected to continue to stay in it until your sixteenth birthday. And when you're wrong, I think that's, I think it's sixteen birthday, so. And then, and then you can wave out of it. So that's why you see ninth and tenth, because most of our kids by the end of their tenth grade will wave out of it anyways if they didn't toss the requirements. And they'll want to enter graduation problems, but yeah, it's. I could, yeah, I could shag, I could tell you all the stories. That was a really interesting one. Sorry, per block.
And again, the question about.
New program. Is that something we provide?
Yeah, that's just what, as an EL student, it's a thing of what level, maybe your initial, uh, are you testing here at the beginning level?
I didn't know if we had multiple things or just.
It's really, it's really, it's a handful of students that maybe typically is ones that might come in that are older, that we would help provide that for. Uh, that speak almost no language. And so that's an approach that our, you know, the church on coach. We usually set up and always support the student. We don't have like whole, you know, we don't have enough students to have a full program, so it's often just how we provide support services.
Thank you.
Just a higher level question on our high school graduation requirements compared to other districts. Obviously, we have state requirements, we have our, our requirements. Can anybody talk? Talk a little bit about that?
In, uh, in how we compare or?
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're pretty close to, you know, most districts that serve similar student population. There are some that have adopted a two hundred and forty credit requirement that should be UC with eligibility. Some have a little less, two twenty, two thirty five. So we're, we're right around where most, most districts are at in that sense. You know, you have students taking six classes. Getting thirty credits a semester, right, six credits a year. Maybe the math that kind of plays itself out that most kids will have some flexibility in their senior year, not necessarily take all the classes. They would necessarily, six classes, they'll only graduate, they'll take less, less of the load. But yeah, we're right in there, you know, and, yeah. One of the discussion points we will have to have, uh, and we'll leave, we'll have to visit this again. Probably sometime this next year is the addition of ethnic studies. Can we add it as to thirty five or are we going to take local studies and study skills and use it there? So we'll have to obviously have a, a conversation on that, but we're right in there. So there's, there's, uh, some districts have gone to two forty, um, you know, it's just.
They're mostly adding science, a third year of science.
Um, yeah, yeah, it could be a burden on, um, on certain student populations that, you know, have a struggle with that level of rigor. They might have special education students that might struggle to access that their year of science or some of the effort that that I've found oftentimes, EL students as well in bigger districts have struggled to access some of that higher language. Um, so there are pros and cons to going up to two forty.
But I think Jason was different. It's, kids are counseled to do based on what they're planning to do. So, you know, that for most of our students, they're not taking two years of science. They're taking thirty four. And not taking just the, uh.
But not all.
Year of language. So, yeah, probably it depends on what they work out with their counselors and their parents to, what they want. But yeah.
And when you put two thirty or two forty, when you start adding more in, it gives less time for students to potentially make up classes that they may have not done well in. Um, during the regular school year, that's, you know, which can happen. Then now all of a sudden, they're being forced to take it outside of just school. So now you're telling the student who didn't do well in the class, the first time now to take extra classes while they're also of their role. That can, I have seen sort of burden on us. They didn't do well the first time. Uh, they're struggling and now they're gonna take seven classes instead of just six because we're asking them to take that additional. So it.
But I think your first point is the major point is that we have a, we do have a wide student body, even though we have more of the high level, but you just don't want your basic graduation requirements to be so difficult for them, others say that they can't make it.
Yeah. And then how about the community service, um, requirement? Is that become more common in brass districts in California from your?
Interesting, I think, you know, it varies. I've seen some districts that got, just got rid of it altogether. Others have a forty hour a year requirement.
Okay, so broad spectrum.
Just a broad, broad spectrum.
It was very controversial when we started it.
Yeah.
We had, we had a boom packed.
Yeah.
Forced volunteers.
Yes, I read some of that.
And at that time, some high schools in LA, I think Doyle was one of them, they were doing seventy hours for the four years. I mean, it was. But it really did catch on, I would say. But I teach that probably maybe some schools might, I guess, might be dropping it because students have gotten so interested in doing their own things. They are voluntary. I think when this started here, by and large, students weren't voluntary unless they might be in something like military league. I mean, it wasn't broad, like, to me, it's pretty broad now.
Yeah, we have kids with hundreds of hours.
It seems like a very, very good.
It is, I think it is, but I think.
For our population.
It requires kids, requires all kids to go out and do it. Obviously, we, for the last year during COVID, we ended.
Ten hours a year.
Not gonna, we're way back.
And, and I think that when we look, not at all kids, but when we look at the majority of our population, they have well beyond the.
So I think that's, that's, to me, that's excessive, the whole concept of, of the idea was to we look at what parents do in schools and what parents do in the community. We need volunteers. We need volunteers to run a lot of organizations. So we would hope we do instill that in students, say, young ages. This is voluntary and important. Not like the poor students who's desperate and may have a senior year. They, they haven't done it.
Yeah, but some of those feelings are connected to other, other groups, right? Maybe outside of school as well, but we know for strong, resilient children.
Right. And it's attainable, it's attainable. Really attainable. I, but overall, I think that, um, the hours, like our kids do have many more hours than the two hundred and thirties do. Right?
But used to be decision, which.
Right. I think that's my question, because the, the one that we're going on to next on sixty one forty six eleven, the alternative means, so right under our graduation table, it says that some students may not be able to complete these based on their needs. And so we have an out for some students that could not meet our graduation requirements. So in some ways, I see some of the, um, some of the disconnect between our basic graduation requirements and then our, our H or G requirements, which I think we're at seventy five percent. So the large majority of our students are at that H or G requirement, but there's kind of two sets of requirements. So it can be a little bit confusing, to be honest, when you come into high school to look at a requirement that is, uh, basic graduation and then you're UC, CSU with H or G, especially if we already have an out for students whose needs might not be met with sixty one forty six. So that's why I was sixty one forty six dot eleven. That's why I was asking.
I see a little bit differently just the fact that I think when you come in, if you're already that, you're a high school student and you're working with your counselor, your parent, you see these, the basics, that's, that's a given. Beyond that, that will challenge you and that is more suited to what you need to do at high school.
Okay.
And that is part of the four-year plans that are counselors, you know, we represent that, our last one, right? We really train that that happens. Um, with all students and there's a, there's a graphic that every kid sees that they're on for a long time that sets up, right? It'll require, it'll require, you know, keep your doors open to all possibilities. So we have four-year plans. Starting those in the server for next grade, those that have been in those schools, because we just start to see the, the path, the pathway.
And Jason had a real valid point. I mean, kids with their maturity levels and things that might happen, they might really flub up for a while and they need to have an opportunity to get balanced and get back focused and still be able to meet graduation requirements and not be sent to some other type of program.
Right. And I think, so referencing sixty one forty six dot one one, right? Just, just so we're clear that that is where students are taking, they're still meeting our requirements for graduation. They're just doing it by taking a CCA class or a college class or potentially giving independent study. Program. They're still meeting our, they're not, there's nothing in here about not meeting the same requirements. These simply can take place in certain instances of that requirement. So when you think about a, uh, foreign language class, uh, we would allow students to take sign language at, right, Urban College for students that that might be a better fit for, to then qualify their foreign language requirements. So that's the alternative means. They don't have to take it through us, but they have to take, they still have to take the classes. And so these are the, the potential opportunities for students to take classes in other locations that are not followers, that they can bring back and put on, uh, for education.
So that, that sentence under the table is directing us into sixty one forty six eleven. It's not just that there's authority to find another alternative means of, of completion. The means of completion, alternative means of completion is the next part.
Yeah, so let's say.
Okay, so it seems a little vague, like.
I have to, in order, you can complete it, but you, you self-complete two hundred and thirty units to graduate. You can, there are other ways to complete those units other than just through our system.
Okay.
And that's what the track is. Yeah, as well as.
Yeah.
That's legally, those, that students have potentially that option.
Because they may not accommodate, the fact that Jason brought sign language is for dyslexic students, that's so much easier for them to go learn sign language that it gets them, yeah, another, another language, right? And so the combination of that, if you can, those now can take that.
And those are all, all those are connected to. These are crossed off. Those are.
Because they're, that's because they're going on the bottom.
Another concrete question.
Oh, good.
That was, yeah.
Mine's a very concrete. Under courses, global studies and study skills combined. Tell me why we're, why we combine global studies and study skills?
It's a freshman class.
It's called global studies and study skills?
Yes, yes. Yeah. It's been designed that way to help students in the ninth grade transition. So it's very helpful. So the students take either that class first semester or second semester. That's why I made the reference that makes sense when we make a determination of, we can redesign the whole freshman level. Which, and have a greater discussion around if that class is still what the board wishes to have as a graduation program.
Because in this day and age, I think that global studies is an important thing by itself, that.
They just embedded in what they do. So they, they use global studies in which to teach the study skills. That's, that's how they do it.
Okay, so for, for six one four six point one, is we okay?
We can move it up to point one one. You'll be saying it again, like you said, probably.
Yeah.
Follow. Early experience. Yep.
Okay, we're ready to move this one on.
So this is what, this is what we're talking about. The next one, there's six one four six point one one, alternative means.
But we just skip point two to.
We do.
Sort of get.
Yeah, point two, so a little bit, four dots brings up a different word.
We have a whole other, another word.
Yeah, madly doesn't.
We need to turn the page.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, one more page.
I, I can't move it. That's.
That makes sense, but, but in the Google doc, in the doc.
Yeah.
Went the other way.
Okay, we're on alternative means?
Yes. So these are the ones we're talking about earlier. I don't know if there are questions. I can talk about all these at this point.
Now, I appreciate that the code verbiage is not in the actual policy. When I read a policy, I don't want to read code descriptions. I want to read code descriptions at the end.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. It comes up in one other one where it is actually spoken in. We would think it comes up.
We, our general practice for policies, some policies. Don't include it. That will probably set a sentence, but I need to try to really hold it out a little more to.
I think towards the radical gym, I've been watching.
Like, for example, in five here, private instruction in accordance with that as a board member, if I don't know five CCR sixteen thirty one, I really cannot comment on
Right.
that. So if, if there's a way to.
So that's probably listed low or will be. See, it'll be added.
So they're added right there. Yeah, but I think my tri-phrase is that code, references to code are in the references section and otherwise we paraphrase what that is about.
That's what we do. That's what they do. This was just, this was just bringing up the old one.
I think what she's saying is she, she.
In six and seven.
In six and seven, so in six, it says in accordance with five CCR sixteen thirty one. I think what you're recommending is get rid of in accordance with five CCR sixteen thirty one. And then add some language that.
If needed, if it's just private instruction, then as a board member, okay, an alternative means is to do private instruction, okay? And then same thing, military service and training, okay? But if there's something else that's key in five CCR sixteen thirty one, then yes, we should paraphrase it. Because otherwise we, unless we're gonna go and click into every.
I would say, I would typically, we are set up because it's more, you have to actually read, it's more complicated than than adding another sentence. It might be adding five or some sentences, um, to clarify that, will they write it in there? So those who want to see with exception, because it's not just private instruction, there are
Yeah.
Multiple exceptions to it.
But that's.
The majority of them are not going to have a reference that for them. We've been very, very careful to remove anything that doesn't have a within accordance or something like that. All the parentheses are being removed and putting into the references.
Yeah.
But if we were to do that, we'd have to start back with the zeros.
But if we were to do that, we'd have to start back with the zeros and start again so that everything is consistent. But guys, I haven't seen very many of these. That's what I'm saying, there aren't very many, but to be consistent, we would have to, because that's our goal, to be consistent.
Right. And so this one, so if you go to the code, the first one is, the government board may grant to the people regularly enrolled in attendance in high school credit towards graduation for grade twelve for private instruction in fields and subjects included in the course of study in of the school. The people shall demonstrate by examinations given under the direction and supervision of the school their capabilities at the beginning and at the end of their period, private instruction evident that they made progress in learning satisfactory to the school. So that's what that says.
I was thinking from up, in ease of finding what you're looking for, you have, the ones where the egg code is taken out, it's clear in the title of egg code five one four four zero, that military service, okay, military service. But if you're looking for CCR sixteen thirty-one, it's lumped between sixteen hundred and sixteen thirty-five, you'll have no idea.
Where it is.
Which, in those thirty-five, which one is speaking to that? So I think that's probably the, this one is the reference.
That's a great point. Another, another reference there is that no one's reading these on paper, like no one has them at home. You're clicking, I guess, because they're, they're working on them, but you're clicking it.
Hey, the reality of this one, just to be candid with you, is what's on here is not nearly as important as what's on there are. Because the AR spells out what we allow. And actually, if possible, we'd like to discuss a little bit of that. So you're aware of what the board's intent is, so that I'm very clear on that, because the AR needs to be designed around the board's intent. And right now, we limit some opportunities for students to receive credit for graduation that existed before my arrival. And so, and we'll let you know what those are if you would like to know.
Yeah.
So for credits earned at a post-secondary institution, obviously, in order to do that, they need to either take it through what we already have, which is our IBC, which is perfect. However, they can also enroll on their own, right? And it's free for them, but they have to get it signed off by the principal, and that's a requirement for the state department. The principal signs off their enrollment, because the principal signing off that student is ready to take that course, right? Well, we, we allow a maximum of ten units of high school credit per year taken outside to be put onto the transcript. And we give a little bit of an opportunity if necessary that the principal could allow more.
Can we give content credit and we accept a grade point average from the outside?
Of course. So if the courses are brought back and listed on our transcript, they'll be considered an out-of-district course. It'll be annotated and such, that it was taken outside of the school district. It'll be, it will be used in the computation of the student's GPA. It will be used for classroom purposes. The student will receive the same letter grades of the high school credit as granted by the college, meaning we don't, we do not give a grade for a class a student takes from a college. Some districts have done that. Most of them have gone away from that. So they won't get a weighted GPA just because they took it outside, because someone would say, well, it's like an AP course, right? It's college credit. So why does AP gives, denotes an extra grade point above? But they, people, most of them would work from that, including obviously ourselves. And graduation requirements, with the exception of foreign language, visual performing arts, and general electives may not be earned through study at a post-secondary institution.
Performing arts?
Graduation requirements, with the exception of world language, mutually performed, world language, visual performing arts, and general electives may not be earned through study at a post-secondary institution.
Is that our policies of the state?
Our administrative regulation policy. So what I need to know from the board is, is it in the board's interest when you look at your sixty-one forty-six dot one-one? Do we want to limit it to ten credits a year? Do we want, which would be obviously forty, right, that they can get in their entire career? And do we want to limit it to only those subject areas?
So right now, we're allowing them to take the credit and bring over their grades for world language.
Visual performing arts.
Visual performing arts.
General electives.
And electives. And we want them to take their math, their science, and their language arts with us.
The goal is, yeah, all of their core academics taking through us. But if a student goes over and takes, like, psychology, we don't offer psychology, because it's general elective. So we know that for our IBC. I'm just wondering what the board is, like, not to tell me specifically there, but really your board policy guides that reg, I just want to make sure that the regulation is, if you are comfortable with limitations. We, part of these are built out of ensuring that our kids don't take on too many things. Part of that, we could say forty total, doesn't matter when they take it, or they could take up to forty, you know, they could take twenty years if they wanted to, but up to forty, so that it averages out. The other piece of it is, if you're taking a class that is outside of graduation requirements, you don't need to bring it back onto our transcripts if it's a college class, because you're gonna have to provide it to the university from that university, your parents. So.
You don't need to bring it back if you need to ship for graduation.
You don't need to bring it back if you're showing it for graduation.
And then you still individually have to provide it. So what college, in this, in regards to item five on this policy, free courses taken at a post-secondary, because you still always bring these for approval first.
They have, students have to get approval, it's required by law that they get approval before they go take them, because we sign off on it. But it just, I'm just wondering philosophically where the board's at. Do you want us to continue to have somewhat of a limitation? Not, not to tell me what you want, limitation wise, but if there is a limit, then we will continue with that. And obviously, it's a conversation we need to have with our.
What's your recommendation?
But, I was. With the, with the cost of college, when you take a class at local college, and then you transfer it over, it counts as the class. Right? And so. That's what, yeah, that's what I mean. That's what they are. I guess you could go off and do something that's not. That would be unfortunate, especially if you're in a financial standpoint. But I know many families in town who, you know, their kids are going to a school they weren't planning on because financial reasons, sort of this the first two years where if they have been able to cover enough hours, maybe they would have been able to go right to wherever the dream, but they got into, right? But they got, they worked, they got into the thing they want to get into.
You need to understand that what a lot of colleges will do is they will give them content credits, or they'll still make them take the number of units that they need from them, so they get their money.
Well, yeah, I watched it in random, where they go, okay, well, those are all your electives, or the, you know, we'll take care of all these credits, we'll apply them. Sometimes they apply, and then or constantly they apply them directly to the class, it just depends on what, I guess, whatever their biases are about the class that you took them from.
That's an engagement, there's some.
Yeah, so I just, I just think that from a financial standpoint, parents would also, psychologists would accept that, in this part, what we looked at in our spreadsheets.
The sad thing is, it's an understanding.
It's all complicated. I, I like how you have them limited to, in our students, in our core classes, in our schools, right? And the fact that we have world language, electives, and performing.
And this current language.
I think there's no reason to limit students. If they want to take classes in the summer at one of our wonderful community colleges, there shouldn't be. There shouldn't be a limit, right? We've limited the subjects, but there shouldn't be a limit on credit. So if you have a driven student that wants, they, maybe they enjoy a slower pace of summer.
They can take as many classes as they want.
What? Right.
Over the summer, but they can only bring back ten.
I think that, that's what I'm saying. So I would say, remove, I would, if you want my opinion, I would remove the limit on what they can be, bring back in your existing three categories. And I like the fact that our core classes are proceeding at our schools and our core subjects.
That's all.
But, but I think differently, because I think there's some students that might struggle with different teachers, when they have one teacher in that area. And they're.
The challenge with that is that we are required to teach core, we are required to teach state standards.
And colleges.
Colleges or not. So when you, what we get ourselves into, we have to be careful of, is that when a student goes and takes, this is again, this is a post-secondary institution, not a, you know, WASC accredited high school, it's different, right? Because they have, they're required to teach the content standards. But you, you're getting a completely different exposure, because the class title could be one thing, but what they're being taught in there would not be the equivalent of what we're teaching necessarily. So I think.
So they're not prepared for the next level?
That's the issue. So, so I simply bring it up because it's been a topic that comes up, I think, brought up by member Perry during last COVID, that, you know, districts were allowing all sorts of things to happen. And, you know, we have this simply, as it relates to graduation, this is, this is, you know, to complete the prescribed course of study. This is not in any way, particularly if you're going out and doing more. But this is just saying, this is what we will allow on our transcript in order to meet the requirements. So if, you know, my sense is that we're in a good spot. I, I someone agree with member Osborne in that keeping it limited to the courses outside of our core academics is important.
And I know we made accommodations for papers needed.
We have made accommodations, which we can do, right? There are some sections that are permitted. So we do have some, but I just want you all to know what the process is, because I think it is important that you're passing a policy and what it is, how we interpret that in terms of regulation, because that's where the policy gets implemented. So if there was an issue with that, I'd like to know.
Well, yeah, that's, it's actually, what's five CCR? We're talking about, you know, like, actually, at the high level view, what are we, we're doing here?
Very rarely ever do that.
No, it's very normal.
But why is it ten per year and not?
Why would we accept only ten under the?
Yeah, versus the forty overall. My kids can have, when they're playing sports, and they're getting some, they'll have to pay credits, and they might stop.
Principal has the authority to allow more than ten, but it just creates a blank as a special reader. Just because you can take twenty-two units at college, because it's the same price as sixteen, doesn't mean that you shouldn't. And so we're trying from a, from a challenge success perspective, like, trying to find some balance, because they still have to maintain five classes at the school district. So you're starting off an admission too, so you could, you're starting to.
I would consider seeing a year. Do they have to? They still have to take five. Oh, it doesn't go to the two. They still have to, that's what it is.
So, so I think, you know, the ten credits and how, given the principal flexibility, and we could say, you know, a maximum of ten credits per year or a total of forty over four years, which would allow students to maybe at a different time, you know, their senior year, they've got way more opportunity to take some classes. So, yeah. So I think that's something that I, I just didn't, we were talking about for a long time, actually. That would be, I was wanting to make sure in this instance, because it does come up at times, that the board takes after there's a limit. There are reasons, and remember, Osborne recognizes some of those reasons around academics. So we want to have some control over it to make sure that our kids are going to be successful.
Right. I'm surprised.
Kids support Kelly's rationale except for world language, because we're so limited here in the district as far as what our world languages are.
You can bring world languages over.
Right, I thought, I thought it was, you could not.
No, those are the ones you can. World language, your art.
Something that's not offered. Something.
Yeah, so like.
I think that's a real limitation in this district.
Allowing students to go to the Korean school, because it's.
I did not support going to the French position, because I thought that, you know, even though I love, speak French, I love the culture, I just think it's very limiting as far as the offerings, where you could convert that position into part-timers, that offer Japanese, Korean, and all types of.
So that one, the limitations of there, so that for world language, it has to be not taught here?
We, no, there's not the stipulation necessarily, but it's mainly, we want students to take, they're taking what we're offering, so we would prefer that they take sign language or Japanese or whatever might be outside, but we, we have students to take. It's very different, though. It's conversational. Terrifically, at the community college, it's a conversational class, whereas the world language standards are far more comprehensive and fresh culture.
Many colleges don't speak it, like, really, they create all the community around it, so.
Sorry, so sorry for the total word lock on this, but I just really felt the board that you as a board understood where we as staff are interpreting your policies. So, as long as I don't make sure to lighten it up.
I agree with you in the sense of using the shorthand, not parts of a red in the shorthands, and just having them read where they could through the link. But, because this is one of the few policies we do it with. Well, I looked at the next one, it's so long, but paraphrasing it would not be a benefit.
I'm gonna read six and seven to make sure that I understand that if we're not gonna paraphrase it. Report back on the second read of this. So, I just don't like seeing code references in a policy. Policy should be sure, it's the same high level, and when private instruction in accordance with five CCR sixteen thirty-one tells me nothing, without, aside from just private instruction what's there. So I would prefer to get rid of any of the numerical pieces in the actual policy, but at least I would read them on my own time and then report back.
But if they, then at the same time, you can talk of war, you see there's some other paraphrasing somewhere, but I just don't worry about paraphrasing. I mean, but the specifics are in the.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get worried about paraphrasing something in my mind, it's no longer means what it legally is.
And that's fine, yeah, so we could go with less words, just private instruction. Or military service and training.
I think the challenge with this, that would be, might be, that if we can ask them closer at that cost as well, but like, private instruction could be all.
It could be any, and this is very specific, yeah.
I know. Well, then we might have to do more paraphrasing.
Well, not particularly much short, I think you probably just two sentences. I just meant some of the other ones are longer and paraphrasing is not normally five words. But you don't want to miss those.
I found some paraphrasing for the military service ones. It's kind of long, but it's what CCR sixteen thirty-four says, so.
Okay, it is long, as well as.
To go to the next point, sixty-one four six point two, if you just go backwards in your mind. This is new, but again, this is something where already policy area practice, this calls out essentially, another means of graduation. Especially in high school, this high school, first exam, as well as the. I think it's just good. And really, the requirement in there is that we have to provide information on your kids to take once leave school, that third paragraph. Pass assessment, but they have that, they have that option. It's by state, by state, so, and we will provide it for them. So if we're doing, we do often out. Let's say often, I would say, there's usually one student a year, maybe two, what we usually have, or just students that might take this, that's looking to see our graduation requirement rate, say, ninety-eight point two, that's like talking about like six kids, that might be wanting to graduate, what could you know, how to go to access to finish, one could actually drop down, you know, so there's that, that's usually the clue, those kids just have got one certain direction to finish our graduation requirements, likely, they would have done something like this. Questions on that program?
I was actually, how you counted this test, or they. So we would help them find the, how to take this test and encourage, encourage, and before they just provide.
Yeah, but they're ultimately responsible, they make the choice, right? But we would reserve information.
Making information available. Eligibility.
Yeah, they definitely stay. I want you to stay here, for some kids, that's their preference, and a wide range of reasons. In the, in the old law, it, in Mississippi, it's still the same, you know, but you used to actually be able to take the first exam, and even if you passed it, you still, you still did it at school.
That law hasn't changed?
I don't believe so. You could pass the check sheet and still stay enrolled if you wanted to.
Yeah, see, if you could pass it.
Up and through your, you know, graduation, so. Yeah, I had a student that did that, that casted and said, I did it so that I, just in case I ever want, I wanted to get out and leave, but I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay through the project. But it was just something that I think this student felt like, you know, he wanted to do. So it was an odd thing, we, all of us thought, well, you didn't meet your graduation requirement, but my understanding of the law was, well, you could actually still stay at school, so I don't believe it's changed.
Thanks. Definitely in the sixth grade.
Yeah.
And then decided to be asked, I still have a warning, but they didn't know I had some curating today.
Um. Before we move on, the next one is six one five two plus a sentence. Really got broken into two sections. Uh, first of all, the class sentence. Really references our approach to setting up an actual schedule to like graduate elementary level. You know, you want to balance classes, you want to look at a wide range of data points to set those up that are very student centered. So I believe it's because. So that's one of the purposes of that, the first, the first section there. The the last half of this is, I mean, there's a lot of disreaches from that, but the other piece in some districts is a separate policy. It's placing that math courses, this is specific. Uh, around. Assessing students as they enter ninth grade about what math course they take, give them an option to request or move to a different class. That was really set up with a big study of larger districts where kids were taking like an eighth grade, taking like algebra class. Going to ninth grade and taking after passing those eight weeks. And so or it's this really is the status, not something obviously we, you know, were. Born those forward to the shirt. So we would encourage it, that actually was set up now, probably seven years ago, I guess it's twenty fifteen. Uh, so that there's a process in place for kids to feel, hey, I thought this last year, why am I doing this? So that you see the whole. That's actually, and this one, but some districts is a separate, is a separate policy, but it's hugely better than this one. It's over the class assignments.
Got an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you tell me under additional requirements for grades nine through twelve, what opportunity school is in first year?
Uh, I don't know, I don't, we don't have one, but I was in the district that had what they call the opportunity school. It's kind of a school that is full, almost like it's almost like doing a a alternative school for students that, you know, were trying to. The creative cohort within there, but when I was, just because I was in it was for kids that were at risk of not graduating, so they had the same teachers. Um, as I made up grades, so I don't know if that still exists, that doesn't exist. I'm sure, but I think they used to work out. Yeah, basically take. Just one great example, middle school that I used to do where I was working, the students were in an opportunity program and that. They were in eighth grade and they, this group of students spent the entire trimester with the one, this one group of two teachers. That have multiple subject credentials, so it was a small group of twelve kids who were all at risk. And all they never transferred, they were walked from one class to another, they were all taught their subjects, all those two teachers all together all day. And so the school that's very small is a program, not a school, that existed, so. Other. Questions?
But it's on the placement of next question, what is the practice on algebra one at the middle school, algebra one at the high school? What's what's happening in practice right now?
Move, you know, it's a hard place.
How they play and are, is anybody taking algebra one and then taking algebra one again?
It could happen if it just took you to the next grade, uh, show that you have that. So it's not really encourage it, it could be a situation thing where if like they know the content, they gotta be, uh, they're working a lot. So it might say, you're ready, but in general, we're gonna hear after. Your student, next grade algebra or next grade algebra. These students are, so these are accelerated students, so they they come in, so you don't see typically. The grades like that, that'd be much more concerned, but the student in the algebra, the grades getting up. Because they were, they advanced through six, seven, seven, eight over two years, so. That's the honest, there is your year, percentage wise, it's six, three, percent, three. So have the kids really struggling in eighth grade algebra? It's easier to move a student at most school that is high school works, coming in right there in class versus ninth grade. Jump in earlier and say, let's rethink where we're going. I worry, make the adjustment schedule if it works out versus when high schools are a little bit different on your class year, get credit for it. And we have grade that have been untranscript, there's a lot of limitations.
And is there any limitation to the algebra one at actual school? And it doesn't count for some requirement somewhere?
Meet the algebra one requirement.
Meet the algebra one requirement.
Yep, so they start to take thirty credits and after order graduate.
That's where I saw some of the asterisk on algebra one.
Means there are criteria, because you're required to pass algebra one to graduate high school, but you still.
Still just a year, yeah.
Ten credits. But actually, in order to get to that class, where kids have multiple opportunities to accelerate, right? So we look at, like, fifth grade, we have like five data points. We're looking at I ready, the aspects for the course grade, or take some tests, to kind of remake your recommendations, say, based on how you done. Do you think this will be fit? And then family says, you know, I still think my kids should get. So people that we talked through, it's like, you're listening, you're seeing, and then ultimately they choose. And they do that each year, so I always have to make sure that maybe they're not six class and then say, you know what, I really. Seems, I understood everything, so I wanted to.
So is this part of the policy only kind of referencing that part of our practice or is placement in mathematics, which is also coming into play again in high school? This whole of these ten, twelve paragraphs.
This this piece is specifically around the ed code requirements around ninth grade placement.
Ninth grade.
Yeah, we have our own placement. This specifically, districts have to have. Place of policy for kids to come into that, based on that.
Okay. So it really captured.
We do review at the beginning of the year because we're required to.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we know our kids pretty well, in the eighth grade. Absolutely, those are the right.
Okay.
So but it's a question that it doesn't align to our practice because we're beyond, we're kind of beyond this basic or number two or.
I don't know that there's a a placement at ninth grade that seems severe in our district. It seems like unless you were failing the. Algebra one in eighth grade, like we just talked about, that would put that scenario on. It seems like we're we're placing kids in middle school in that advanced path. And then ninth grade, that there's not really a decision point again, unless they were in that scenario we just talked about. Always recognizing that there's a chance to take advanced math at some point in high school. But it doesn't seem like there's this placement decision that's happening at ninth grade. That's why I was trying to make sure I was understanding our true practice. It definitely sounds like we're following the code, it just seems like we're ahead of it.
We are.
Meaning that we're doing this, I would say we're doing this more as they come into middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
This whole placement decision, reevaluation, multiple data points.
Yeah.
Putting them onto these math tracks.
This was really.
Accelerating their.
You know, you got a K eight district and there might be three or four of them, right? There's multiple cases districts there, but like, you know, they're not necessarily connected, maybe they communicate well, maybe they don't, right?
Oh, I see.
Four are here and, you know, I'll unify it and we've got multiple middle schools, they don't talk and they get distant place and they give a placement test and they come in. The kids like large sports, so it's really sound pretty, districts aren't necessarily aligned the way ours are.
Yes, okay.
So then the question is, do we, do we need that art driver?
Um, I think we have to have it.
Yeah, legally have this, that's good. Yeah, that's okay, that's what.
Yeah, you see where I'm a little confused. That's true. This doesn't sound like legal speech, but we have to have it as the answer, okay, but we not for us.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's what we base this one by nine. Uh, individual education program, and so this is pretty much the same. CSBA made recommendations last little sense here, they moved it to the cabinet, right? So we don't think that it would move that one over, but. It's structured to foster parent. Our boss parent actually has the same rights, so they're. So we split that, right, so more specific, that's why CSP. Uh, the next, the next one, six one five nine point three, uh, there's just one language change in that. She to that.
Is it? Yeah, I know. Is this used for when a a parent is not available or is it used when somebody wants to opt to have a legal lawyer represent them? When the parent doesn't want to do that, is this like there's no parent available? When did we see this sort of a parent?
Um, there's a variety of times when that happens. Parents unable to represent the child. Children foster here, the child might be with a relative who's capable of representing them. Just a lot of different situations.
I mean, and it gets just completely different, which is. This is specific to students with disabilities.
Yes.
Thank you.
The. Next one is selection, uh, six one, six one point one, selection evaluation instructional materials. Again, um, just, there's a handful of updates in here, but uh, the review process. CSP is obviously a process, little details of the process could change, but the state has a, basically, pre standard review process for selection of evaluation instructional materials. Probably teacher, majority of these are teachers. They built into it, so this is just an update to align to that. Uh, and also references the public hearing, that's just the instructional materials that comes up at four minutes. That, uh, there's a reference that we added around. Materials are in digital formats. That's just access to that home. Making sure that, otherwise, we have to run it pretty rough, so. That's a really key piece, you know, just just having that's not enough. We have to make sure that they have access.
If I just, but we only do one public hearing, but we do four, four times a year.
Sorry.
I just don't want anybody confused, so. A little hearing, eight weeks prior, right up, it has to be eight weeks after the start of school or before, and then we do four portions.
And why do we make a distinction between K through eight, many state board approved materials and nine through twelve? They just need to make the criteria, why is that that distinction in the educational world?
State doesn't make recommendations of this level.
They do.
Only do, you don't, you you could. You could go outside the K, the recommended statement shows a K, you want it as long as it's standard to what.
Okay. Okay.
But they, the reason, yeah. The reason they reference the state doesn't make the recommendations of the physical level. But they'll come out, they do the process like, you know, social studies, what we did a couple years ago, they're, here the books that we have approved. As acceptable. Or schools that are not to be, that are like the spread. But then it will be K eight recommendations. So our high schools, it's the standards looks for like that, so we process such.
And the selection committee does have parents on them. They parent parents, I don't know.
Curriculum council always.
Yeah. Not selection, sorry.
We always try to get at least one course, but actually all levels of high school, so I'm interested in that answer.
I had a funny thought on instructional materials, I just wanted to break through the board's attention. I asked my sixth grader what textbooks he has as I was reading through this, and I knew what he was going to say, but. I think it's important for us as a board to realize that most kids under the age of twelve don't know what a textbook is. So when you ask them like, hey, what kind of books or programs or digital books do you use routinely? We're thinking what a textbook might be, and they really have no concept. Of what that is or where it is in their classroom, so I thought that was interesting to kind of put as a. A lens when I was reading this policy, you know, I was like, well, like wonders, you remember that? Like you have something like that in science right now that you go to or for social studies, but I think it's shifting the way we think about textbooks and instructional materials. So your point is really well taken that that instructional material, we're not going to call it textbook, right? None of our students coming up will know what a textbook is, they literally hooked at me with like, what is that?
That's like, that's like what we're wearing clothes session, that one, I remember reading with the chair, someone from the chair, right? And the textbook came out, come under the chair because they just sit there, they're not really using it, but if someone wanted to pull it out, really pull it out. For reference, and some kids do like it as paper part of it, but not the majority, I used to.
Yeah, so knowing that they can access the material or the program, I feel like, you know, we use instructional material in our, in our policy, which is good. That that it's available at home as a core body of information, I think it's still important to put into.
No, it's important.
Into reference.
A lot of the state's policies related to this are having a hard time keeping up with the amount of instructional materials that are out there that are highly engaging to them. That may not be, you know, you think through this, you know, frameworks come out, publishers, they're either doing one, ultimately they're doing one or two things. But they have to either take what they already have, make it a little bit nicer, and say this is a brand new book, it's totally aligned, so that's really, not. Or they have to take multiple years, highly costly, very costly, create a whole new book, and by that time, everybody else started up something. So that's why you see so many teachers, there are more workbooks, I will say, ones you want. A lot of them have done that, was actually better for kids than a super hard one, they wrote a page so as they call it. But the general teachers are picking, putting so many good resources that are out there that are not a big publisher, that takes years to do or just slaps those to cut, something that they're to have.
Right, that's changing.
Do we have to buy textbooks?
We have to have, students have to have access to instructional materials that are aligned to state standards.
So do we have to, do we have them for every student or two?
Every student has to have access to instructional materials aligned to state standards.
Textbooks anymore.
Well, no, you don't have to have, we could choose not to buy textbook, create our own, we have to ensure they're aligned to state standards.
But I know we do have textbooks.
We have some, there's all classes, there's all classes, but it's not anything, there's like, it's simple, it's composed with that, but the bulk.
I think it's great, I just, I was just concerned about us being forced to buy Texas, Texas textbooks.
Oh, goodness.
Since they.
Totally changed, yeah, yeah. And it's just, there used to be money, every seven year, every seven years, every seven years, about, we got a cat, roughly dollars, so you had to buy that year or buy it with the money. That's gone, so that's the other thing that came off that.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
So now it's just. Without being like, oh, they, yeah.
Interesting. Yeah, all right, well, thank you for allowing me to, I just, it's, you know, my ninth grader kind of remembers when there was a book that they pulled out, but barely. And they don't really think of their instructional program, their big idea is math, their wonders, their civilizations, they don't really think of that as. As a book.
I'm at first and as I'm.
Those are workbooks, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And my senior has two textbooks, right? But he has a piloting knowledge, because in the last class, it's two, they're actually a book. Yeah, but they don't use them. But if those teachers still felt like you need to have it at home, right, you need to have it as a teaching record, so.
All of our students that get that, that program, that digital, it's called a digital textbook. Because they're all way to their pages.
That's exactly why we're just starting. Maybe even have, or has lots, but also even have access to. Before we go back to, it's connected, it's supplemental, instructional materials. And so, again, this is, this is just an update to my CSP policy, but it references somewhere, you know. It's, when we're doing some materials, again, a little, it's always a little dated because you see teachers write on really wonderful websites where they're engaging videos and. Like do, you know, the point is all of the best engagements to this, right? Uh, if it's a larger program, it goes through a formal process, right? Like when we first started, I ready, it was a supplemental, the LA program. It wasn't meant for to do, to take out, not studies, but wonders. That wonders is a core program, I ready to something more professional program. That's how we mentor, we process, but the teachers look at it, and that was the one that shows some of the best. That's something I'm not for that. Obviously, policy, reference more, more in a sense of paper books, but really supplemental, so so large.
Yeah, this is a little outdated as well, especially as the increasing focus is on those supplemental materials, right? There are a million and one engaging materials out there, how do we make sure that they are aligned with goals, curriculum objectives, you know, standards, like that they're safe, right, that there is a, there's a, I think, a focus on supplemental instructional materials is not coming through in this policy. I don't know when CSBA wrote it, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll play. There's a better way to help us with all the major things, if you get it, if you're regulating, you know, outside, right, that's such a supplemental, and I write the process.
Does it, does it define supplemental broader in the AR, six one, six one point one?
Yeah, I think supplemental, pretty broad.
Yeah, it's a broad word, I didn't like, is it in AR, is it broader than talking?
Boy, but it's great recognition of what, what is supplemental means, yeah.
Okay, because that's a higher reference, that's what I just.
Well, like, for example, take the movie ratings, that's great, there's nothing wrong with having movie ratings still in here, but what about our YouTube ratings, right, what about age restrictions, rated for content, you know, content created for children, right, which would be the YouTube version in the last four years of what our movie rating system is like. And really, I, I feel like this policy needs a little bit of work to protect our students and enhance the core instructional materials and movie, like I said, movie ratings is great, but there's a lot of other ratings.
But you, does YouTube have a rating?
They do, well, they have like now and they have in the last couple of years, they have a content created for kids, that's like a base baseline.
So, yeah, yeah, right, so part of it is, you know, when you look at the request system, I mean, you have to have some discretion, as the teacher needs to, as it's supplemental, has discretion to determine, but they're bringing in, and maybe that's where they need to understand that if it's questionable, you can see on this, like, you're supposed to ask before you bring it in. The challenge has been, and to your point, adding in the videos from, that are a little less, that have a specific rating, like are, you know, it, it can make it a little more challenging, but the, the truth is, when you go through the AR, around appropriateness, it lines out what the expectations are when they do bring in that kind of work into their classroom. So, we, we streamline that, this is more a higher, high, high level day, but it's a supplemental process, we're pretty clear about what's expected, and we haven't had, but we haven't had any issues about supplemental, because our teachers make pretty darn good choices around what they introduce in the classroom, not looking for things that are going to be inappropriate, but there are, there are three times where we do have that conversation.
Yeah, it might just be nice, since we're taking the time to review it as, or to any modernize it with some of the very basic versions.
I, I, I will do, a little bit take on that, if the paragraph proceeds what you, same as if they're movie ratings, but says, selection of supplementary instructional materials compliant with the following district criteria, which is referencing the movie ratings. So if there'd be any supplemental material they're picking, it might be something from YouTube, it might be something, whatever, that they're using this as a guide, whether it would fit that, reference what makes a G rating, so it's not just a movie, it's, that's the way I see it, it references supplementary instructional materials, anything. They choose to play music, whatever.
Yeah, I just think there's other rating systems out there that are water, that are similar to how we would have used this, this job, because I keep criticized for theirs, I mean, that, that's a business.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, I think, the, I think the challenge of technology, like, you might have something now, like two or so now, but, but it's, right. You know, like, so I think it's so, it's changing so quickly, maybe, you know, if there's were major updates, guidelines, that might be the best way to do that. So after you stay in the line, after you age program, they also have to be inclusive, make sure students are dislocated, and show the question.
But this is already, this is referencing ones that are not already district approved.
Yes, which is a lot of what's, what's out there in classrooms today, a lot.
There's a lot of all kinds of supplemental materials.
Which is great, that's what we want to see, so, you know, and I think, even just like picking a movie show, in the past, you would have, oh, that's PG thirteen, that, that's definitely inappropriate. So there's other, I feel like maybe look for other ratings, might not mean that it was updated in four years, but those things policy, yeah, but I love that, I love T V, yeah. I'm going to get a two thousand, it's a lot, I'll get an eight, if they're not.
Yes, supplemental.
Of course, and I mean, just.
This is supplemental, it's not included in approved learning resources of the district, so I'm just asking, does the district have a pretty expansive list? Or what I'm hearing, Kelly says that there's a lot mainly that's beyond that list.
Oh, yeah, there would be, there's material that teachers would bring in, I mean, the prime example would be a current, Ben Arden, right, so we don't put that on a list, simply because it's.
No, I don't want it with.
Right, so the, yes, there's a, a lot of things that are used because they're relevant at the time, that you tie into, but again, I think we have to recognize we have, we have to have teacher discretion, because it's not appropriate, and we have to rely on them as experts and professionals. And, you know, that is the name of the game in this instance, is that, if you're going to make them jump through a lot of processes in order to access things, they, one, they're not going to do it, because it's just not reasonable. But in the instances where they're thinking about something that is questionable, they do bring it forward and say, I really want to do this, but I'm wondering, and we've got permission slips, to say this is what's being shown, or, and you can sit, or you can get alternative assignment, so teachers make that in combination with administration, it's appropriate. This happens mainly at the high school, but, you know, there are times where middle school, and I'd be thinking about showing something that's potentially controversial, and say, we want to make sure we get it out.
What role do our professional librarians play in, or do teachers, on supplemental instructional materials? Because at college, they're to keep.
And this is, this is, they're not, because as a content teacher, you know, you're, you're the one who's developing and designing lessons. However, they're, they are a resource, right, that they can recall on, so for example, we, we added, the state added all sorts of access for students for all the different genres, et cetera, right, so she helped manage that, helps the students, and did some work, and I can't self thought my head, what she's been doing this year, going to the classrooms, presenting, great kids of library, so we've done that, and I'm sure she's still continuing to do that, of how to access those materials to help the students understand, how to do it, because that's a more important piece of those components, but then she does, she does share what those are.
I was thinking of from a recent visit, off the road, and coaching, what is done, I would see professional librarians playing this role, as well as teachers, with materials, as well as just, you know. I just found a professional librarian at college level for key components of an educational process.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, like, just all the instructional coaches or tech posters, like, those are the ones that are constantly providing.
Yeah.
Staff, and, and it could be both, I would say, the strength of a coach and the tech posters that are in the classroom all the time with teachers, we have support them, and so they often have a really good lens, like what fits that very level, with the kids. That would be harder, might be harder, or elaborate to provide, so, not necessarily correct, but I would say it's sort of the coaches.
My experience has been the other.
What I was just putting here is, it's definitely two different.
I understand that, I think one of our secret, I'm going to link this, because it's not getting professional librarians, things that people covering three to four libraries in the department. So it's the expertise that they're bringing, could be really be, that has been helping teachers, in particular with supplemental materials.
You know, it's still just celebrating.
I think you do such a great job, this areas that I think that could really improve, and that's one of my big thoughts.
What, far as then, we can usually all that, right, or G G G, right, right, yeah, well, we have that more, I would. Thank you, I, I agree it's updated in a way, but not very liberal, as much as what we're saying, Mary. Is there something more current, you're right?
Yeah, we'll get it, yeah.
This is, I feel like it covers a lot.
There's such a lot of, you know, that, that they're being created, they're being made, so. Trying to design a license policy, trying to have a.
Yeah.
Beautiful in how we select this.
Unless we're going back to work, I think that AR, make sure that AR is solid, to feel good about that, you know, maybe you'll be able to.
Or your other language, so we can add, right, like.
Yeah.
Got to think about that.
Yeah.
How to come with something that's lasting through, that's, you know, changing here, and that's lasting.
Let's draw, draw up, like, yeah.
And still send suggestions before, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Way before.
Yes, well, that's what, you might, you might talk about it, you have to, there's some poor one.
That would be great.
And we can even do the flip side one too, that's where it works, like, it's not, I'm going to pull it, and say, you know, I'll bring it back to the next one, and talk about it more, we don't have the task at this time. So we'll have bullet, and bring it again, because we're going to have a whole workshop over this. And that would be like, very few policies left to talk.
What's the next one? The next one's a more general, we have a lot of student assessment, DB six one, six two point five. It referenced, you know, the initial part, references, just how assessments are using, that are part of our process, of assistive learning. Obviously, a little more general there, does get to state in terms of form of assessments, as part of the state program, or to use those a little bit. Again, those ones tend to be, tend to have ones that are, you push some vendors, or anything, but actually provide a little bit more applicable resources to go with it. And the piece that's added at the end was an update for CSBA, or the record or accomplishment, so while we keep in that, for, for each of the students, across their, by the age of twelve grade. So that was much closer, right?
There's something I'm worried about, what is in there with this?
We have a separate policy for that, this is just a piece that comes, can expect to be in there. We have to ensure that it's in there for the time, right, of course.
To make sure that there's something in here, and it could be in here, that matches our practice in this post pandemic recovery about interim assessments guiding the current year. So we talked a lot, I think it's a board about, you know, state standard based testing, getting those scores in the summer, they've already moved to a different grade, they don't really inform teaching and learning, and so, one example, I know you guys have mentioned, is the I ready, and the, that assessment is actually informing instruction in the current year. The students aren't just moving on, and those are just scores in the file. And so I'm wondering if there's some language that either already exists in here, because my eyes are getting tired, or that we could add, because I thought that was such a tremendous change from what assessment used to look like.
Yeah, there is, actually, that might be something that go to, have to add that first paragraph around the range of, we talked about a lot last year or two, around having a comprehensive assessment system that includes your extreme diagnostics, as well as more related assessments. But having, which also connects to assessment, that's, that's, you can't have a two assessment system without a system assessments, so, maybe something I could.
Put that along with.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the first paragraph to, to live around the approach, which I think that's probably right now.
Like the very first paragraph, or the first paragraph, or inter, interdependent system?
My thoughts were, was the first paragraph, just, you know, the, the, you know, the system system, that's, you know, really, it's actionable, data, comfortable.
Right, throughout, because that's what ties into the system that evolves for you.
So, kind of.
Yeah, and in the current, in the current year, that's the piece that's really stuck with me as a board member, is our, our, our focus and our energy, our commitment and time and money to have that impact to that year.
Again, I was impressed when we went to top of the world, and saw how we used assessments, where I was with the kids, deciding again, six weeks, we were, and that, that is just, well, and then, this is so beyond, you know, this, we're doing it, but I don't actually, it's a little.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so it's kind of concrete, to put it specifically, put in there, to make it more practical, yeah, so closely, more closely aligned.
The next, the next one is six one, six two point eight, research. This replaces BP five, or five thousand, which I wish it was, kind of like updates the language a little bit, a lot of the CSBA policy. So this references, operations projects, the district, well, it's like, we don't really, about sectors, that districts are, you know, so much of our state data is really what for, so, but we do have, do some research, we have like our VR class, we're seeing, we're having, when certain topics come up, the kids bring up, we have a little, sort of a board that looks at it, so this makes sense, or everyone asks this question, or, or we have a scientist, that's what, typically we assign, science teacher, that is, we're there as well, to see if it's appropriate to.
Did you say testers?
What's that?
Did you say lessons?
It's run through instructional services, so I mean, this will be more, and we do sit down.
And it's traditional research.
It's basically an informal, we have a form to fill out, sign out, like, probably that, you know, I'd say like maybe twenty percent to twenty five percent of those projects that the kids do, we want to do, most of it's like intent, and we approve, and also we give some recommendations, like, yes, survey our students, but this question, like, a little persuasive, or you know.
In addition to federal regulations, instructors and college levels, there are these.
This is, so, in this instance, what Chad's talking about is our own internal students doing research. However, if an outside entity wants to do research, yes, yeah, they have to follow, you know, we would never allow them to walk back, or, 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 hire a gift book. So, and if, most of the requests that we, we get for research are adults, they want to talk to adults, they don't want to talk, they don't want to do research on kids, because it's usually educational practice, right, so they want to interview principals about a question they might have, and so, or superintendents, I, I take part in three year probably interviews that are for someone's dissertation, or whatever it might be, and I, or I engage in it, let's say, our, give you the IRV, make sure it's approved, and then I review the study and determine if it's something that's appropriate, however, they, you know, through IRV, none of my results are back in the beach, right, so it's normal, it's just a day, whatever it might be, so, that's what we get most. Prior to my arrival, there was some research being done here by outside entities. Some around common court implementation, that was more survey staff. But we found that we survey our own staff enough, we don't need to be asking other people come in and do that necessarily, but we haven't had a whole lot of requests from our way. I haven't received any that would be more like district wide, most everything is very isolated to, it's like administrator level.
Who's about a seventh or eighth degree?
Usually not good to have them doing that in the spirit of their work. We've run into that before, try to.
So just try to.
If however, they're doing a, you know, an actual research project, where they're just gathering data, or their teacher getting a master's degree, and they're working through their classes, also they would talk to Chad about that, if they're going to be writing that up, they would want to make sure that it's appropriate, that we're, our students are protected regardless, but even in those instances, typically the nature of their ID, I'd be just to protect the subjects.
This is not addressing that type of situation.
This is researching, no, this is more about, but how, but through the admin reg, like, in terms of this, how we communicate with people about it, we try to ensure that they're aware, but if you think about a student teacher, student teachers often do research themselves, or on writers around students for their own coursework, right, and so, that's something that.
Right, and so that's something that would not come through us, right?
But they do, like our, our pizza deduction, our great teacher, they sent letters out to the families of their class. As part of my process, I'll be. Students this year. You know, I heard you're doing that video, do that, please.
And I think the member members too, what's great about this, this policy is worded, it says, you know, research has to be aligned with the goals and objectives of the district. And has to benefit the district without disrupting the school program. So, you know, any outside group or person that's requesting research, whether it's maybe a student teacher or somebody that wants to ask, like if they want to assist many students or staff, superintendent. It all fall under that.
A lot of bringing us to go on, but because we can't have the class, students are just any research project they want. And then they can sit around and kind of hold and shape it or shape it and hold.
The only, the only thing I could suggest to add to this might be based on illuminating the newer. Hack that happened earlier this year might be something that we are engaging in here that, you know, it says researchers so respect the privacy rights of students. But we might want to put in something about protecting our data.
It's in contract. It's in our contract.
Okay, so not in.
No, there's a contract, this is for research, limited doesn't produce. So on our students, that's, that's a risk on the ostrich of our information. Any, any, any of those agencies that have our information, California's very strict data privacy. And that's what, you approve the contracts like that, that we have very strict data privacy expectations. You know, Ron probably attested how much that's changed over time.
Yeah.
But those are totally locked in, so if they, if there is a breach in their data. Then there are very clear steps that they have to take to alerting us and then alerting the victims or, you know.
Yeah, and we kind of company like illuminate would follow that contractor, but say we entered into, we allowed somebody to do research and now they have our student data. Would we want to do this policy to cover that they have some researchers have not just covering privacy rights of students that have some. Data privacy safeguards.
That would be the contract, that wherever we engage with them around research, that would be part of.
Everybody contract. We do, because if this one talks about privacy rates of students, so now that's more to be really protected in that data too. And really stringently, that was the whole thing for New York, because they were kind of saying, you said you were going to do this and you weren't really doing a good job with that, and so.
Whenever we begin contracts for a student. That's one of the first things we look for, to make sure there's, you know, protection of student privacy and data notification if there's a breach. And, you know, at first there wasn't always strong language, but now the last few years has been strong language.
Okay, great, so research would go through contract.
The next one is BP six one six three point four, student use of technology. This one says a few, there's a change there near the bottom. But otherwise, this one is, has been updated recently. So we have a technology agreements that's on top of the ready, that's due to. Part of the annual data confirmation process. So there's a lot more layers to this as you be on this portion of the policy.
Three J L six one six three point four.
Four.
I thought of the very last paragraph, the reference of digital, right, or reconstruction regarding that one. All of that sounds like digital citizenship. And so I thought that might be a nice word to add to that last paragraph. Because everything that seems to follow after, you know, I'm not going to read it all, seems to now be captured in that term, that term. It's just a suggestion.
Shall provide digital citizenship. Lessons.
Or you could just insert it with a second paragraph, second sentence, set digital citizenship instructions show and glue.
Yeah, telling all that now, kind of all of that stuff is, is in that.
Does it his or her?
He's a tall, my goodness.
Or you could just.
He's the judge.
He should write a page of programs, certainly digital citizenship. Such instruction. Where?
In the first line of the paragraph with four students. Okay. Few more, next one is six one six one two. Sorry, six one six three point four five.
No, we're returning.
So this is new. This one's new, this is also some ways similar to like the, the concepts of roles one that's. Guidance support. Dr. Keller and I, we always come up with this one. It's all encompassing, that's intentional, we might get specific as well as change over the years. And we've added up a lot more consulting, a lot more support staff and so we have the share and so we have separate level B, school level. We're talking about, you know, two or three of our counselors do. It goes through personal, crisis counseling. As well as advisory program. So that's really referencing. Most far as the advisory, I still have this tutorial period. This does that paragraph, says that like teacher may also provide some of these lessons as well, obviously training involved with that, but. Still, that type of period where it's called tutorial, very very common, the secondary schools now, what happens now? So there's often some bottle of like service level counseling or guidance that is provided in there gradually. And that could be simple as the college, the study skills, the executive coaching skills. And then they're all the time, they're constipated, they're established as well, so this is reminiscent of that also happens in the advisory program.
That helped me realize too why this ratios need to be lower, right?
Do all of our teachers at the secondary level participate in a section of advisory or tutorial?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Say all.
Yeah, there's different ways to start, I've seen them so, but we leave here, so. I might, I want to say, they have more kind of like guidance, like lessons, like actually specific. Not curriculum lessons for that, at the high school, I believe they have a wanted to teach yourself, have a dedicated period to develop that curriculum lessons. To work on that, so that it's not just get it all, that's actually some building, updating lessons with the counselors, so I'll let Chad like that. Yeah. It's very, it is many ways to sort of, we see.
Yeah.
A monitor. It's a monitor as well.
Um, I have a question about where, where will I have social emotional support for curriculum or instruction? Where would those resources actually show up? Like say we jump over to. Second step or teacher created curriculum like we just talked about for advisory, is that in? Instruction, because we're doing formal instruction in SEL, is it in?
You mean for secondary?
No.
Or for, oh.
District wide. Is it in the mental health and wellness policies that we've already done? I missed it, but it's, it seems like we have, we look at different programs, right? And want to find out, okay, what SEL program? And there, there's becoming more of them and there's more research on their effectiveness.
Right.
Where is that starting to do our, we have the little bit of policies.
Alright.
Yeah. Okay, so now here.
True cyber prevention, all those are things that are.
The way I'll back.
Enter personal health council.
Yeah, I can follow there, I mean, this is all of this.
I just was concerned about the paragraph that starts, starts about many information of personal nature disclosed to school counselor by student age twelve or older. What we're missing here is sexual abuse, there is, the reporting language is not here.
It's in a separate section, because this is specific to. Confidentiality requirements, which all, everyone's a mandatory reporter, so.
The supersede, right, Jason? That would supersede.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing any of this stuff that they come across that, even if they were doing education.
This is more about, this is more about their record, this record, it's more about their record, not, not recording this system, so. As we put it, we would code these scenarios. So there are certain things that are personal nature that we have to get. In part of our student record, we have to get the question.
That's about, I'll talk about it in the labor for it, this is a long way to surface. It does talk about, you know, while the child will be a student. So reference fact, so the little reference back to all that, I mean, this is about what's going in the record.
See, that reference to education specifically talks about reports of changes.
Yeah, that's what I was. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it, it does draw on that, so we hit the little references to the right hand. They're.
Is it possible that we add? Something under educational counseling that talks about the boards intend to have students receive an animal. Based on the last set of G group grant, hiring of those new counselors, that there's something in there that references that beginning in grade X.
I think my administrative regulation and my implementation of your policy.
Yeah, okay. Because here it talks about in grade six, parents or guardians receive a general notice at least once before the road counseling. So that they can participate in that, so it seems like it's going down the path of being very specific about what kind.
When you're talking about doing four year plans, six year plans, that, that's far, I think, probably too detailed for the board to be around staff and that. So I think it's more for, for me to do it through a regulation, but your policy, that's kind of. I'm just being, I'm just saying again with you, because like, if you start getting into the details of certain policies. You, you're going to be opening your, the, you're starting out to direct a lot of the work and when do you stop?
Well, where, why is the first?
Lady grant stop permanent.
No, no, what I'm going to ask you is, under educational counseling, why is it so specific when this exists in policy?
Probably echo. Called out a lot of that.
Oh, when they're start, that's what starts, before that grade, you don't need to do that. That's what's.
That's all I'm trying to understand, so if there's something for mandated to do and that's what we're putting in our policies, that's fine, but if this is talking about what we're currently doing. There's a lot of, it's really detailed policies, so.
But there will be reference to some of that now. What this will look like, we mapped it all out already, specifically what are the things that are going to be. Part of the council program six through twelve, we call it. And that includes the components that are in here, but it, but in greater detail, so when you, when you see. For example, number one, development implementation, media and long range educational plans, we actually carve out specifically what does that mean? That means it's six year plan at middle school and a four year five at high school. Right, so then that calls out when they're expected to do that, how often they're expected to meet with students. So we, we're taking one, we're filming it all up there, so.
Is that kind of ideal for everyone?
Oh, yeah.
How was filled that?
Right.
A reference, but then that one, that reference, student strengths, abilities, right? So that's where a lot of that comes from. Counselors will be, should be involved, you know, co-stated strengths and interests, right, with the kids. College career. So there's very much involved. Other questions?
Sorry. Make sure it's all, it's tied back together, like the whole point, but.
The next one, six one six four point four one. This is, this is new, by aligning current practices and policies, but it's just disposable, and so this is something we're already doing. I believe this, there's specific encoded in here that's required, so putting this into policy makes sense. That was essentially talks through the obligation we have by law, to make sure students have adult services that may not be in our schools, but are. Okay, then.
Jason, this is something that's gone on for years and years, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they're required to, yeah, so.
Why do you put it in?
And, I think, and I think it's not mandated to have this policy, but the, like third paragraph, it's having a budget, we have to have a budget. So aside, kids that may choose not, you know, choose not to come to our school, and then we have to go find them, we have to go provide services to them, or assess them. Based on that.
So I'm just, I'm remembering right back from head to. Over at the message church, there was a school was still open, but I don't remember whether, but this, they came over there and assessed some couple of kids that.
Correct.
That needed services.
Correct.
And because it was an obligation to do it.
Yeah, it's a child, it's a child requirement.
Yes, like a resource.
Oh, yeah. Right, right.
So this is. Because it's taught by schools in our district, it's just taught by students who may live in our district and go to private schools themselves.
This one's reference, this one's referencing, the first paragraph references, to our role in private schools. And our district.
In our district, there are, there are students. But how about the others? The parent decides to send some of the same markets. Are we responsible for?
We work with capital. So the two pages to do, to determine who's going to do the assessment.
And who pays for it?
We, we have a conversation. Oftentimes, you know, if it's our student going over there, he may just do it simply because it's, it's easier for us, we might know the student already. But yeah, there's definitely a conversation happens between entities, because technically speaking, I recall the district where the student is attending. School is not the, is not the one required to assess, it's the district in which the student resides that's required to do the assessment. So in that instance, we are required to go to St. Margaret's, however, at times, because capital, we do, so we say, well, we'll do it, or they'll do that one, you just call it wash. But the district which is resides is responsible for the assessment.
But the older students, when the program opened after the district. I know there was concern that our district would be responsible for any unit that came to live there. In the residential program, and we were not. But if we have a student that lives, our school district enjoys to live there, we would still continue the services until they're twenty two.
It's a little confusing, but the way they wrote it is that. Capital stronger, for example, would have the responsibility to locate students within their jurisdiction, where, where the private school is located. The idea behind it being is they would have access to the school. And then it turns out that some of those students reside in the neighboring school district. Then that neighboring school district is responsible for assessing.
Because.
It's really on.
It works.
Yeah, we figured it out.
If I didn't find out she would have access to St. Margaret's, capital stronger would have better access.
The next one is TJ. It's a topic, but it's new, but it's not, so it's a copy and paste. Policy in there, but a lot of this is, a lot of different tracks that actually started, we just want, but you'll see the. The eligibility pieces reference, so we're talking about how that's two months each year for the four years. Here's an instruction part, is actually pretty similar to this policy. For state standards, it lines with killer, like minimum of three hours stay. A minimum of three hours a day. There's, there's reference that there to the state program. We have it extended, they can refer to do, TK doesn't have to be the same length. So there's just some. And there that we have. And then. Here's the, near the end. Irreverses staffing credentials, which have changed a little bit recently, and as well. As well as. He also references the ratio there, he knows that. If you reference that one to echo, because if you remember next year, it's twelve to one. Or maximum twelve one, and then the following year ten to one. So they call it out as well.
But thank you for paraphrasing it for me, without having to go advise you. Do we have any intentions of commingling from Calbridge State preschool? That there's a. Thinking there are a lot of this policy that's dedicated to the rules of, what happened if we did want a commingling classroom in Calmness School?
Not yet.
Okay. This is in the CSBA policy.
Yes, yeah. The, you know, was it the state programs, right? So as we look at our specialization preschool, knowing that the duty to integrate the range of students, right? That's a potential option, obviously, you know. Paid preschool option for students, we could. Next year, we'll make sure our learning league, which is actually not a preschool program, but. That preschool age gets come in and have that more regular basis. That alone gets coming a little bit, so there's different options available. But definitely next year, we don't really think of the long term on that. We also, for next year, with our learning league program, putting that on the same site as preschool. So right next to each other, and they have some regular time. As fit as, very different use of programs to kids play. But long term, we ought to buy out some type of program that's consistent every day. So we don't just have special, special preschool program by itself.
Do we know a lot of issues with parents that make distinct TK? Or do we foresee issues with children that would otherwise be eligible to start kindergarten? Whose parents want to. Another correct way to phrase it, let's hold them back, right, to redshirt them, to give them a year of TK now, especially as we add more months. TK, do we foresee that being an issue where, oh, okay, come to. School now, and now there's some more months that I can't hold, hold my child back, please give me some better language for that.
Oh, rich, rich.
Is it still on there? We, we just. Going to increase the age of our graduates.
We have our, also specifically states that are placed by their age. That's common in all, pretty much all districts, right, or based by age. And so we, once we all have, I want to parents that like say, oh, my kids are ready, there's that. So on our side, we want to be able to see the kid and see him interact, and that's the challenge of a five year old. There's growing so much and changing so much, like we want to have time with them. It's pretty rare that we can say, kinder or first grader. Right, but that would be a potential option, instead of saying, I've got a whole like kid out coming in. Because they come work with us, so quiet interventions. If we decide that they're still not ready. Very rare at all. Last one, new ones.
Three more. We're almost there.
Current moment, Alex Mosses. This is BP six one seven two point one. Again, this is the lines to, new, but the lines to the practice we're already doing, so I think. Bringing in, especially around, especially around the CC. AP, I think Zachary on the shoes, and that's about halfway. Logic for access, perfect partnerships, we have that with IVC. And so that reference, that's, that's the language. Connected to that as well, a lot of us do that. Was like, see, class on our campus, how is. Classes for students. Then they also have a. Little bit of language, a little bit about current moment, how we, obviously, taking classes out of college. Outside of us. And then our. Our, how we look to get students to work on math. These are practices they have at a place for a while, puts it into a policy. The parents are wanting to look at the policy related to it.
Do you have issues?
Yeah, so. We have to go. Questions about this. Which are, these are what we're already doing.
Last, it's being taught currently on our campus. Is there a way to do more of that? I mean, what a win, right, to have college credit, have meter graduation requirements. To have it on our campus, that seems like it checks all the boxes. Or is there a reason that we shouldn't be doing that?
Just have that in a moment to do. We have, our, our IVC classes have a lot of enrollment during this learning, right, because wasn't a lot else, why not? As well as concurrent, it's come back, you know, it's still. Like good level for a while, it was a couple of years ago, it did come down last year, a little bit this year, because of other, right, I don't have the same time, sports are back up and going, so. So those are. They're willing to have a class if we have. The only other option that we, but it's not in here. Too rich, right, is if we had a teacher, the college has to agree to this, but. We had a teacher that had master's degree in something, they like, master's in English. Right? Hired by the community college, we would see what we do sometimes, or something with sixty classes, what's CCA? And then maybe they're a college, they get college credit for English time, right, to the license of college course. Or how much, probably to have subject specific masters along with our education leadership, education administration.
And like maybe world languages. Right, that's one of the letting. So that might be a something. Because we see that on a resume.
Yeah, well, you see, there, there's early college programs, which are. There's a handful of those out there, that are high schools, or can I go to a community college, read like, finish high school. But they have to have all those two, well, they're also, they're being able to hire teachers from beginning, or over tiers that have a degree.
Yeah. That's the, that's the benefit, right? Because then you have, you get the members.
Kids that, you know, you're specific to those classes.
Yeah, but it seems like there's such hyper participation world language that within what we're currently letting people enroll in electives. World language and arts.
Yeah.
That would be a good area for us to teach.
Yeah.
We could find this.
I'd say our side, where else? Do you want to do a, or is, or the colleges have to agree to it? Colleges have systems that. Essentially, you know, the department that have to, essentially agree to it, that they're lined up, this picture, it's not, it's essentially adjunct, right?
It's pending. Also because the advantages are so long, and long.
Yes. I would, I would argue that this is not a great thing to ever have. Right, so. So, all right, next one, education of children in military families. This, again, new lines of current practices, we have one like this, for foster youth and homeless children. So this one, this has. You know, provide specific policies, we talked earlier about graduation, potential, state graduation requirements, just a couple of that. Specific, so students. And then, last one, education programs. This replaces BP five zero one seven, puts us into the six thousands. And just references students that I. For students who may need flexible educational environment. We tend to, obviously, for us, a lot of our partnership with this, we're trying to provide that access. But we, there's different, there's a lot of different alternative options. May say to do, related to graduation. But we pay, excuse me, voluntary roles in classes. But this council system has an important policy. To that, what that were, well, we have some form of a fire, but this is in the six thousands. Those are all the, the changes. The remaining ones in here, the equal time care for forty five. Right, are ones that have no changes or a reference, recommendation higher, so. I don't know, as far as time for those ones.
I think for the no changes, or is everyone okay? If it's not through a kick, we just, those are my changes, we don't need to bring back. They're there just to process the section, right? I was gonna find the six oh one three attachments. Very well, I missed it. Oh, six oh one three, no recommended changes, yeah. So there's no recommended changes. Just pull it out.
It should be, it says that, right, or policies.
I can pull that one up.
Maybe it's in the touch up.
Yeah. That would be fine, and then the ones that are not there.
It's not, it's not.
Oh, yeah. She'll pull it, yeah. Sorry about that. That's okay, good. So the. The other policy, the one where you retired, you want to just quickly go over why we're retiring. Sure, like that they, because they connect with. Ellie, you can pull it up, it's on the screen, or I can send it to you.
So the, now for one, just go through the ones that recommend retire. Which, we can start lowest number BP six ten, classroom interruptions. This is not, well, there's a bunch of policies at the beginning of six thousands that are not CSBA recommended policies, or they're not. They're, they're, we're created at some point. Out of the line, a lot of stuff in there is spread out across different ones, that's what. I know it's a lot of these, you see, there's six thousands that are current policy. This one references interruptions, it's a whole policy around interruptions. The main ideas, it's already BP twelve fifty, but it's just preference around like. Campus, you know, you want to have, want to minimize interruptions, and we like to check into the office for visitors. Or really, I'm a nice kind of interruption. For visitors or current access.
And actually, this one came up in relation to our walkers. That was actually a request, not from our walker, but from previous walkers, that. When members go into the rooms, to not engage in full discussions with the classroom teacher while they're trying to teach their lessons. And that was actually requested, those of the classroom teachers asked me about. And, you know, we were very, our last session, we popped in, sat down.
We were on boundaries.
But I think it's just probably a reminder for the board as a whole. We're going into the classrooms that the classroom teacher's instructing, so. We need to be mindful, we should be instructed from their instruction.
Don't read where you're at. We're on a practice. We're on a practice.
No, no, you're sitting with the kids and talking to them about what their instructions is appropriate. Taking the teacher away from their instruction was what was the request, that there was a, since where. Started talking to the teacher a lot, which was trying to disrupt. That was.
Okay. Even sometimes sidebar conversation behind can be disruptive, so. If Superintendent Valoria and Mr. Connet are during a classroom, and they start having a conversation. Even if they're using their whisper voices, it can still be pretty disruptive.
Yeah, because Mike doesn't know how to whisper.
So I think we need to be really mindful, right?
We've been doing lots of walkers as, as actually as administrators, so we, we recognize that too, that we walk in. We don't really talk at all when we're doing the walkthrough. When we step out of the room is when we have our discussions. But we do step in and talk to the students, or we might ask them questions, so like, what do you think about today? And then obviously, we can look at the conversation with students, it's fully appropriate, long shot, so distracting that. He loses or she loses her place in the instruction, but it's just something that was kidnapped, a couple of teachers asking. Can you, can you remember everybody, including administrators?
Right.
That were there, were there walkers, so I find myself having to, like, make sure I don't interrupt, like, what's.
Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah.
And we're about to talk about those.
Is it? The next, the next one, rep, rep, return BP six zero one two, grading procedures. You'll, this, hopefully look a little familiar, we talked about this during the five thousands. BP five one two one, which is. Grading. Grading evaluation of student achievement, so it's basically the same thing, but that would actually align with CSBA recommendation. Including the number, so a lot of references here, like. Free practices, and the standards at the beginning of the school year, I'm still glad we had that conscious from there, so. This is just, this is what we already were, we've added in the back thousands. All right, no, next one, we're at retirement is BP six zero one four.
So homework's not being retired.
Six year three.
It is, I just.
End on.
Oh, you know what?
That's what it's about.
They're moving it, it just hasn't moved it.
Is homework the one you wanted more time on? That's why it's not, it's not being brought forward right now, that's why it's not attached.
You saved me, but it is.
Did I, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 and that's why.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at it a little bit more time, so.
It's taken.
So no change, that's not.
Yeah, I was just, you know, Chad, you could just kind of.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, look at a time, I'm thinking we can also just, even though we just call it homework, which is great, so that one's not forward, and. We'll bring it later, after a while time. And the other one I don't know, so there's a different reason besides just retiring, like because the CSBA, they don't align.
They're all reference to other policies. And it's noted on the top of those.
Yeah, we put it in here.
Yeah. Who brings back the return?
Observers, that one's reference, we talked about that. So, yeah, they're all referenced or quoted in other places, and we'll say ours, from a. Functional side, it's nice for us to have them aligned to the CSBA policies. When new information comes out, who then goes past, directly references this number, and so it's easy for us to find the resources. If we have a number that aligns with that, so.
Right, or having these duplicates, parts covered here, parts covered here.
Really, I'll keep it in one place.
Great, for all the. Basically, really needs instruction services, so. Eighteen visitors, you know, this.
So do you want to bring the retirees back for a first read and approval like we did the last time, and get them off the.
Are you guys good with that?
Jim says it's fantastic.
And then. And then not bring back the. No recommended changes at all.
Correct.
Yeah, we have a couple that we have pulled, that from previously that we haven't yet to. Address, I think there's some that we talked about, that we haven't brought back to workshop yet. I think what our goal would be to bring some of those, like.
I think what our goal would be to bring some of those, like, one-offs back at a future meeting, once we get through all of them, so that way, and we're almost there.
But then we can dedicate.
We're getting very close to the seven thousands, we'll be next, and then from there, we can bring back all the one-offs. And get those done, and then all we'll be doing from policy, we're coming forward would be the changes, that would be coming forward, so.
And I did, like, two of them, maybe you mentioned around modernizing the language, before you put it as a question mark for a while. What work, Mr. Social Science, the whole agency again. Yeah, come on, we get, we're starting to come back again. Chad, I guess. Experience that's good to get learning. For you, but really, like, do you think you have the work for all the time you dedicate to this? And really, the team, it's all headed, jumping out in different areas, and that's big, and that's taking learning, it helps us with a better understanding. And it applies all the way down, so, thank you.
Very helpful having your thoughts around the approach. Always have, having raised, raised, we have a meeting scheduled, about two weeks now with the directors, and we're going to start. What, you know, what updates, changes, update, so having, understanding that approach, through more details is very helpful for us. So to Dr. Kelly's question, there is a reminder during the policy to say, what does this actually look like implementation? Let me know, I'm happy to provide what the implementation looks like. I think it's important, because that's where the alignment comes, right, exactly, if it doesn't, if the board policy says this, and implementation doesn't actually meet what the board's intent is of the policy. And that's what we want, is adjustments, so most of these, I think, are pretty clear, but if there are instances where that's the case, then. Please let me just reach out and say, what is this, when you do this, what does this actually look like in terms of practice? And then if it's a concern, we would bring the policy back up and say, okay, this is kind of what it looks like in practice, is, and have a discussion around it at that point. The board authority wants to become explicit, and the policy doesn't line it out clear, then great, otherwise, we can change that in the reg. But we need the board to make sure that not just one member doesn't see it, and the compliance, the majority would say, yeah, I think this needs to be changed in content. So, and that's our, that's our goal, every time you pass a policy, if it has a regulation, what exactly is the regulation and how is it aligned to the intent of the policy? So. Please ask away, if there's any question on that, we have, we do have admin write books, so we will be updating quite a few of them. I just learned a, of this, because we belong to six thousands, to the five thousands that we grew up, we'll update. We try not to, we are trying, yeah, there's, there's been a lot in there, but one of the nice parts is as we align the CSBA, we're able to do the same thing. Right, we're able to kick out some of those six alignments, so they don't have duplicates and. And, and some of them aren't admin reg as much as maybe it's in a course catalog or something like that, but the language is in there that we apply, so not everything has an admin reg. So, but the real important ones, definitely.
And then my gratitude to you is going to be that you always take us back to the higher level, but also that you ask those questions of, hey, it's being implemented this way. For comments from you guys over the time, over a period of time, I'll make sure that we're still implementing this the correct way, and I really appreciate that. And allowing us to spend all the time to ask how does this play out, and what does it look like, and it's all, yeah, it's such a learning process for all of us.
And then it changes.
And then it changes.
Laws changing.
Those lawyers.
They'll keep making updates.
Well, I think even beyond laws, I think that the vision and some of the areas that we're going as a district change, right? Council would be a great example, right, of where are we going? Policy, and maybe it needs to shorten, and the admin reg needs to grow, right, but, you know, let's make sure that our policies really reflect the vision of the board. So that the district can carry it out and not just are muddled with a bunch of, no offense, but a bunch of legal or educational code, right? We want to read those and know where we're going in this area, so. And Victoria, I don't know if you guys know, but she, all of these policies, it's like a, it is a living document, and she is keeping track of all of it. Like, when someone's retired, quietly retired, and all sorts of information, and it's amazing, and she's gifted for it, because she likes to hold that. She doesn't really level, so thank you, because none of us do have a, any one of you doing that.
Carol's seeing the crazy spreadsheet, so she knows.
Yeah, I thought this was a big series too, it's an important series, right, the destruction of students.
Five thousand, six thousand, so we need to eat potatoes and what we're doing, right, it's all about kids.
Yep, I love this, and so, thank you, good luck to kids, right? Thank you, thank you, everyone, and so, and extend gratitude to you, oh, your team as well, so, thank you.
So, of course, they do.
Yeah, that's what I. He's the team. So, thank you.
So, of course, they do.
Yeah, that's what I.
Getting hunch happy books.
And thank you guys for all the machines and all for doing that. Oh, thank you, other day, okay. Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Look at this. And I looked at the front to make sure what dates on it is.
Okay, also, Paul and Sarah. I. Okay, question carries, four zero one, the shot is, four fifty-eight, oh, early. I just say.